Good evening, everyone. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission for June 11th, 2012, for the municipality of Anchorage. May I have the roll call, please, from the secretary?
County Oshimura?
Here.
Bruce Phelps?
Here.
Stacy Dean?
Here.
Terry Parks?
Here.
Dana Prue?
Here.
Ray Hickel?
Here.
Peter Mokehie?
Here.
James Ferguson?
Tyler Robinson?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome Tyler Robinson to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Tyler is a planner and is also employed by the Cook-In-Lid Housing Authority and the former Long Range Planning Director for the municipality of Anchorage. So, welcome Tyler. We're pleased to have you here.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no minutes for the meeting to review today, so we'll go to Item C, Special Order of Business, Disclosures. Vice Chair Parks, would you do disclosures, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Commissioner Phelps?
Nothing.
Commissioner Dean?
Nothing.
Commissioner Ricky? Commissioner Pruez?
Nothing at this.
Nothing, sir.
Okay. Yes, with regard to case 2012-051, the conditional use for rooming house, I was not present at the June 4th hearing and I've not listened to the meeting audio, so I'll be abstaining from voting.
Thank you. Commissioner Oshimura? Yes, Oshimura? Sir?
Yes, I do have something that I would like to disclose. I am the former managing partner for Turnigan View Estates and Turnigan View Park LLC. I no longer have any financial interest in those two subdivisions. I would also like to declare that Don McClintock is my personal real estate attorney. I have no financial interest in the case and I have not had any expulclatory conversations regarding this case.
And do you have any private interest in any of those lots any longer?
I do not.
Okay. What is the wish of the commission? Can we take a vote on that?
Right.
Please.
I do.
Right.
I'm going to direct Chairman Oshimura to participate in case. Help me out here before you go.
It's the last one.
2012-078. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded by Dean in the queue.
Okay, yeah, Stacy, you second that, I guess, right? Okay, good. And any comments from anyone? Okay, and then let's call it for a vote, please. A yes vote would direct her to participate in this, a no vote would have her abstain. And Madam Chair, I have, it looks like that you will be participating with this, and I have no conflicts.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on, we're moving on to C2, case 2012-051, a zoning conditional use for a rooming house. This is a notice of reconsideration. This is not a public hearing. What is the wish of the commission? Commissioner Phelps?
Madam Chair, I move to reconsider case 2012-015, excuse me, 051, a zoning conditional use for a rooming house.
Thank you, and that motion has been seconded by Commissioner Parks. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, as you recall from last discussion on this, there was a question about whether or not the Planning Commission had the authority to identify a number of spaces for this particular activity that was less than that required and the variance that was approved by the zoning board of appeals and examiners. Our recommendation was, as you can see inside the, I guess you'd say the bottom of Page 1 of the staff memo, we have had information from the Department of Law that indicates that. We do not have that authority, and for that reason, I believe it's appropriate to first reconsider the case for that reason, and in a subsequent motion will be involving, you know, the change in that stipulation.
We need to vote on the matter for reconsideration. If the vote fails, there's no reconsideration. If the vote passes, the main motion is back before the board. All right, so this motion passes, the main motion is back before the board. Commissioner Phelps?
Yes, in this particular case, which is 2012-051, reconsideration of a conditional use in the R2M district for a rooming house with up to 58 guests per AMC 215230, I move for the approval of the request, subject to the conditions noted in the staff packet that begins on Page 2 and continues to Page 3, with the substitution in 4A. So, for the wording that we used to have, I would propose the wording that is identified on the top of Page 2, which is, "Provide one parking space for every four guest beds per the parking variance approved by the zoning board of examiners and appeals."
The board moves on the motion to reconsider. If the vote passes, the main motion is back before the board. Commissioner Phelps, I have just been informed by the secretary that we need a motion to amend the main motion.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I move to amend the main motion in this particular case and to substitute in the main motion a variant language in Item 4A, and the variant language would be, "Provide one parking space for every four guest beds per the parking variance approved by the zoning board of examiners and appeals."
Thank you. So, that is a motion by Commissioner Phelps, and is there a second? It's seconded by Commissioner Dean. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I would. It's obvious, as a result of legal review, that we don't have the authority to require a smaller number of parking spaces, and I think in an instance where it's clear that a lower number of parking spaces would be appropriate after review of the request by the entity concerned involved in this. This has pointed out to me, though, the need to have the authority with the commission to deal with variances where we have a situation where a development is coming forward to the board, and I think it's really appropriate for this board to deal with some of those variances if requested by the petitioner, because that way we can see everything at one time. And in the instance that we dealt with, it became apparent, at least to me, that the number of parking spaces imposed by the traffic engineer and approved by ZBIE was way too high for the type of use in that area. So, this is example where we need to go back in the Title 21, make the changes, and I will propose changes.
All right, thank you very much. So, if I can sort of summarize, just so that I have it clear in my own mind, is we currently do not have the right when considering a variance, I mean, when considering a conditional use to propose variances. Is that?
That's right. You cannot deal with a variance issue in a conditional use request.
All right. We have the city attorney here, and Dennis Wheeler, do you have a comment regarding all of this?
Through the chair commissioners, no. I think the commissioner perfectly addressed the concern and the issue. That is, currently this body does not have the ability to grant or modify variances. Those variance powers are delegated and handled by ZIBA, so when you get a conditional use permit, application that involves variances already granted by ZIBA, you don't have the ability to modify those.
But if those variances have not been granted by ZIBA, then we would have the authority to put any conditions on a conditional use. Is that correct?
Well, I think you have to have the authority to be able to do that, but once you have the authority established, you should be able to do it, but you might want to ask that question of the attorney as well.
Right. Because we put conditions on conditional uses frequently, but if it's already been to ZIBA, we can't do that. Is that?
Through the chair, I was getting very specific about this case, but generally the answer would be no. You can certainly impose conditions, but those conditions have to comply with code. A variance is an exception from the code, and you don't have the power to do that currently.
So, we'll address that in our Title 21 deliberations, I guess. All right, thank you. So, there is a second. If the motion to amend a second, the commissioner who made the motion speaks to your motion. The board votes, we are now voting on the amendment.
That's correct.
All right. Do I have any objections to the amendment?
Okay.
All right, so that amendment is approved, and now we vote on the main motion. So, Commissioner Phelps, do you want to move to the main motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move for the approval of this particular project, consistent with the recommendations as amended in Item 4A, and as otherwise described in Pages 2 and 3 on the staff memo.
All right, thank you very much. May I have a second, please? Seconded by Stacy Dean. Is there any objection? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. Thank you. All right, there are no items on the consent agenda, so we're moving directly into E, unfinished business and actions of public hearings, case 2011-104. The municipality of Anchorage, this has to do with deliberations for the provisionally adopted Title 21 rewrite chapters. Do I have a motion? Phelps and Dean, you're still in the queue. Are we having trouble, or are you in the queue? All right, so what is the wish of the commission on this matter? Case 2011-104, are we, where are we? Are you in the queue? Oh, okay.
So, this, I would entertain at this particular point in time a motion for postponement. As I look out in the audience, there are a lot of people here to testify on a variety of matters, and rather than keep them all waiting for an hour and a half or so, I would entertain a motion.
Commissioner Parks?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone the deliberation on Title 21 for this evening due to the number of people that we have for public hearing.
All right, thank you very much. It's been seconded by Dana Pruez. Is there, is there any objection?
We need a date, I guess, to continue, and we'll do that on the 20th, which is when our next publicized meeting.
Yes, that is correct. We have a work session, for those of you that are in the audience that are interested in this matter, we have a work session scheduled for Monday, the 18th, at 5:30 PM in Room 170 in the Elmore Planning Building, and we will have public deliberations on the remainder of the chapters on June 20th, which will be here in this chamber, and it is our goal to proceed to finalize our deliberations on the remaining chapters except for the Chugiaq-Eagle River chapter. So, that is our schedule. We need to have a vote. Is there any objection? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. We are now moving on to case 2012-061, the municipal light and power, this is a zoning conditional use for a utility substation. May I have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The R4 district allows a, the R4 multifamily residential district allows electrical substation with a conditional use permit. The proposed electrical substation provides sufficient landscaping to buffer it from surrounding residential and commercial uses. The substation will be set back from abutting residential lots and rights-of-way and pushed towards the commercial uses along Benson and the office uses along Arctic in that direction north and west. The proposed substation does not appear to adversely impact the surrounding properties. The division finds that the proposed site plan meets the standards of a conditional use. The driveway is 24 feet wide, which is the minimum allowed per the design criteria manual. There will be above-ground electrical wires that run directly from the petition site to Arctic Boulevard, along the north boundary of the site, through the parking lot of the adjacent office building to the west. Overhead lines will not be routed through the residential neighborhood. There won't be any barbed wire on the top of the fence. An eight-foot fence with landscaping exterior to the fence is being shown. The site meets the minimum required setbacks. I apologize, it's a 10-foot fence, not an eight-foot fence. The department recommends approval of this conditional use for a utility substation, subject to Conditions 1 through 4 on Page 5 of the staff packet. There is an aerial photo on Page 7 of the packet, and the site plan is on Page 16, begins on Page 16. There are several sheets, two civil sheets up front, and also lighting was looked at and not found to be a problem. It's going to be directed internal to the site and doesn't appear to trespass into neighboring properties, rights-of-way, or uplight the sky. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions? Ms. Dean, thanks, you're in the queue.
Through the chair, my question is related to the sidewalks and the street improvements. We're asking for, the petitioner is asking for a variance from those particular things on S-11929-1. We are hearing both of those at the same time, right?
Yes.
So, could you tell us a little bit about why we should or should not accept that variance?
Through the chair, Ms. Dean, I'll be presenting my staff report for the plat here in just a few minutes. If you'd like, I can present now, or you could hear the conditional use case, whichever you prefer.
I'm sorry, I just thought we were hearing them both at the same time. It's okay, I can wait.
Commissioner Phelps?
Question to staff, how many, I guess, how many comments were received from the public on this, and were there any adverse comments you received?
I'll double-check the packet, but I don't recall receiving any phone calls or letters, any public comment whatsoever in regards to the plat.
Through the chair, Mr. Phelps, there was no adverse comments from the public with regards to the plat at all.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? One thing that we could do since the case 2011-104 and S-11929-1, one is a conditional use and one is a plat for review based upon the conditional use. We can take testimony and hear those together, but I would need a motion to do that. Commissioner Phelps?
Yes, I would move to hear the case for the plat, which is S-11929-1, at the same time as the other case, which is case 2012-061.
All right, and that motion has been seconded by Commissioner Parks. Seeing and hearing no objection, that is the way that we will proceed. Thank you. Are there any other questions of staff at this time? Well, I have a question. What is the current status of construction?
I believe, well, first of all, the petitioner would be more able, better able to provide accurate information on that. Staff today checked, and a demolition permit has been granted by the Building Safety Division for demolition of a structure that was on the property. The property's obviously been cleared, and it appears that they're doing some utility relocations within utility easements, which may be done without a building permit. And no fill-in-grade permit has been issued, none of the other permits have been issued, and this is, appears to be the, you know, the normal run of things, but the petitioner could speak to that as well.
All right. Anything else? All right, shall we go ahead and hear from the petitioner's representative?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Dwayne Adams, D-W-A-Y-N-E, Adams. I'm with USKH Incorporated. We're representing the petitioner, municipal and power in this case. The project is to provide a new substation, and that substation will provide for the needs of Midtown. Midtown is, as configured currently, is, with the advent of the new South Central Generating Plant, is far short of the ability to meet the demands of growing Midtown area. And thus, this becomes a tremendously important project for meeting the current needs as well, and in particular, the expanding needs. The site is an area that is rapidly developing, I think, as far as Anchorage goes, perhaps developing faster than any other location in the community, and this area is a mixed-use area, and this particular site is bounded by the, to the north and to the west by B3 property, immediately to the east by R4, and as well to the south. That R4 property is under common ownership, and that common ownership, and that individual intends to look at mixed-use development. In fact, our firm has done some work looking preliminarily at some things that would provide for the growth of this area and provide for, and meet the needs of the 2020 plan. With respect to that, then, what you have is a site that, again, is bounded by commercial development on two sides, residential, and the plan you have before you provides for the 10-foot fence for screening of the infrastructure that'll be inside, as well as landscape in a 10-foot easement on the east and an 8-foot 9-inch easement on the south, meeting the visual enhancement landscape needs. With the fence, it's a 10-foot fence, we feel that with the mixed-use character of the developing area, that it protects the interests of those folks and ensures that it will fit in. With respect to the requirements, there is a request with respect to the variances that it be relieved of physical improvements to the surrounding streets, as well as another variance for the relief from the dimensional requirements. In discussions with staff, recognizing that, A, that this is a redeveloping area, it's under common ownership, that there's, in all probability, a good chance that many of the roads and many of the rights-of-way will be reconfigured, go through a vacation process and replating, that regardless of what we do is going to be rendered inconsequential. Second of all, with respect to the adjoining property, which is under the ownership of MLMP to the west, the Starn Building, if you look at the platted plat packages that you have, what you see is that it, the existing Starn Building is five feet away from the current right-of-way, and any reconfiguration would need to recognize that whatever we do is rendered moot with respect to the ability to do anything with that adjoining property. So, with respect to that, we do understand the need to ensure that at some point, a street is put in that meets municipal standards, and we did agree in discussions with staff that a 10-foot additional right-of-way to the south and a 10-foot additional right-of-way to the east would meet that requirement. With respect to providing full street improvements, to do so, in essence, would provide a very short section of curb and gutter and sidewalk that meets no other curb and gutter, curb and gutter nor any other sidewalk, and curb and gutter that handles drainage that currently is in a V ditch, and with a street section, would not meet nor provide for the drainage if it was configured in a curb and gutter scenario. And then, looking at all that, we do ask for that relief. I'd like to save the rest of my time for rebuttal, if that's okay.
All right, are there any questions? Commissioner Pruez?
Thank you. In reviewing the documentations here, one question. Are the power lines coming in the site? I can't seem to find them, but I need to plan to see each. Are they aerial or buried?
Mr. Pruez, Commissioner Pruez, the, there is overhead electrical that's being put that comes from the south and is along the south boundary as well as the east boundary. That's going underground. There is a line that connects into the distribution lines that will be at the north property of the newly-platted property, and that will feed directly to Arctic and will be above ground since it's a transmission line, not a service line. But all the service lines are going underground, so that's an improvement to the area.
Okay, I'm just curious, I see the renditioning on Page 24 of the staff packet, and I go through all the planning sheets, and there's great detail on landscaping, foundation, fencing, but nothing on the aerial. And I'm curious about that, because that, to me, is just as important to see where the power lines are coming into this piece of property in relationship to the site to make a decision on this request. Obviously, you know, do you have something you can give us to show us some type of an engineered drawing of where the actual power lines will be coming in, above ground and below ground? It's a substation connecting to something, and we don't show what's coming in and out.
Yeah, the above-ground lines are at that north boundary line. I mean, it's relatively, I think, straightforward, the, and...
Is it one pole? Is it one line? Is it multiple lines? Is it?
There will be multiple lines, and it will be one pole inside the facility, which will handle and feed directly to a pole on Arctic Valley. I mean, Arctic Boulevard.
So, is this a type of pole?
What, they've looked at another number of scenarios, and it would be a steel pole right now.
And how many lines are on it?
I can't answer that. Mr. Commissioner... Mr. Commissioner Pruse, I, unfortunately, I was under the understanding that we had an hour and a half before this due to Title 21 as we left last, last Monday, and so MLMP is not here, they, they will be here at 7:00 unless they, they've shown up since I've been here. And I apologize for that, my misunderstanding, I guess.
To not have any aerial coming into the site, what would that do? If we put something on here that says, okay, your conditional use is approved, but any, any, any power lines coming onto the site has to be buried?
It's a standard policy in the community that transmission lines are not buried, period. No transmission lines in this community are buried because the loss of a transmission line, the inability to get to a transmission line is unacceptable as far as a service goes. So no transmission lines in this community are buried. Service lines are a different matter, and that is part of the retirement policy that both MLMP and Chugatz Electric are subject to.
So transmission line, by, by your definition, is a very big line? Fairly large?
Yes, sir. Yes, Commissioner Pruse. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I, I don't know about the Commission, but I'd sure like to see what it looks like.
And I, I believe that af, after the public hearing and after any discussion, that we'll have an MLMP person here who can provide a lot more detail to that.
Other, Francis McLaughlin? You're in the queue?
I apologize, I withdraw my request.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments? Questions? Tyler Robinson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Really, a question related to the two variance requests, and probably as much to staff as anybody else. But the first, in terms of relaxing the request for right-of-way in this particular area, and also at the same time mentioning that it's likely to redevelop in the future. Likely when that other landowner comes in, and perhaps, Mr. Adams, if you've worked with them on some potential sites, you could shed some light on this too. But if they come in with residential development, will they be also requested upfront to provide 15 feet of, of right-of-way, or have you essentially now set the, the stage of what this road, road width is going to be in this area?
Through the Chair, Mr. Robinson. Really, the, the requirement for dedication is somewhat up in the air until we know exactly what the, the owner, the adjacent owner wants to do with the property. So we, typically, upon a plat, we do require a full dedication. In this particular case, that would be 60 feet total, 30 feet from each property owner adjacent. So it really depends. I mean, there, there is, this is a redeveloping area, there is the opportunity for vacations and rededication. So until we really know what the, the adjacent property owner wants to do with his property, it would be very difficult to speculate as to what we would require.
I guess the, the obvious point, though, is that if you've, if you've already limited what your right-of-way can be there by what we're doing here, what we're being asked to do here this evening, I think my, my sense would be, you know, hopefully, the municipality will also acknowledge that constraint on the future developer as they come in, and not just ask for it because it's what we normally ask for, but ask for what is reasonable to ask for given the precedent here.
Through the Chair, Mr. Robinson, you, you are correct. I mean, if, if we're not asking for a full dedication from MLMP, I think it's fair to say that we wouldn't ask for a full dedication from the adjacent property owner. That's correct.
Thank you. If, Madam Chair, I had another, another point on...
Yes, please.
Actually, the second variance that was requested, and that has to do with the variance to actually perform the improvements within the right-of-way. I understand from the report that this, this particular development does not in itself generate a lot of traffic. One could argue that the presence of this, this facility does help support additional growth and change and development of, in this, in this area in the future. You know, that said, I, I would have concerns that the next, whoever comes in at some point, because it's not a collector's street right now, is likely going to be required to make the full improvements within the right-of-way. And while we have a, you know, a public entity here that's, that's engaged in, in aid development here, my concern is that it, it just, the can gets kicked down the road to the next guy, and at some point, someone's responsible for making 100% of the improvements. And I wonder about fairness, and, and I, I guess I would like to ask a brief conversation about this, but in the code, it mentions a provision talking about a fee-in lieu, and I think that was one of the comments that was raised by the Traffic Department, that if you're looking for redevelopment in a community and you don't support that redevelopment as you move along, you actually, in the end, make it impossible to ever do any development because that, that last development has to support all the improvements that come along. And so I wonder if, if what staff's response was to looking at fee-in lieu with charging MLMP, some, some portion of funding at this point that would be reserved for future time when the full development were to take place?
Through the Chair, Mr. Robinson. A fee-in lieu was, was looked at pretty closely, and it was, it was brought up to the petitioner and the petitioner's representative. Unfortunately, the municipality does not have in place at this time a mechanism for executing this fee-in lieu. If there was, say, money posted for future development of this right-of-way, there's no mechanism for ensuring that this, that this money is held and, and used for this improvement. So while a fee-in lieu is a, a very good idea, there's no mechanism in place currently to, to execute it. So that's why we, we went against that at this time.
So, so are you saying that we have a, a portion of the code that talks about what I think would, could be a very practical tool, but, but in effect, and it, it's impossible to actually do what the code suggests?
Through the Chair, Mr. Robinson. There, there is a provision in code that allows for it, but it has not been, it's never been done in the past, and there's, there's really no, there's no mechanism to, to ensure that the improvements, the money put aside for this particular project will be used for this particular improvement. I mean, chances are, that money could be grabbed and used for some other capital improvement project. I mean, there really is no mechanism for, for ensuring that that money will be used for this project. So, yes, I agree, there is a provision in code, but we've not used that provision in the past.
Okay, so finally, I, I guess what you're saying is, the, the real choice that, that we have here is to either approve the variance or deny the variance, which essentially forces the petitioner to, to make these improvements in the right-of-way, and as Mr. Adams pointed out, you then have a, a section of curb gutter that doesn't really serve an overall system. Is that right? Is that, is that the only real option in front of us here this evening?
Through the Chair, Mr. Robinson. I, I think there is the option for a fee-in lieu. The code certainly allows for it, but in this particular case, there's no mechanism to, to execute that fee-in lieu. So I would say that, that right now, the, the Commission really has the, really can deny or, or grant the variance. I don't think that there really is a mechanism in place to, to, to execute a fee-in lieu.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Well, I have a question for you. Can you describe what a demo permit actually allows you to do?
Madam Chair, I, I don't know the specifics. I did not see what the conditions were posed on the, the demolition permit, but typically, it allows removal of all structure on the site, and then the backfill with suitable material to address things like erosion control and, and items that, that may cause any, any sort of off-site and problems, stable, stabilize the road, that kind of thing.
Okay, well, I did have an opportunity to visit the site, 'cause I travel down Arctic Boulevard several times a day, and I did notice that they were digging in what would appear to be the utility right-of-way, but as you know, when you're digging in a right-of-way and you have large equipment, you know, you're probably going to spill over. So there is, there is a lot of activity on that site, I guess would be the most polite way to put it. There is no actual digging going on, but there is a significant amount of activity on site. So I was just curious in terms of what sort of permitting, what sort of permits you need to start your process prior to receiving a conditional use?
Yes, Madam Chair, there are two, two activities. There's a demolition permit, which you alluded to. The, the second thing is, they are putting utilities and preparing for the undergrounding utilities right now, and that's the, that's the work you probably saw on site. Typically, the utility does not give fill and grading or any other permits for work within their, their utility. With respect to side casting of the dirt, I, I couldn't speak to that if it were in the right-of-way and whether that's standard practice or not. But that, that work is the undergrounding, or the beginning of the undergrounding that you're seeing, and bringing those utilities and getting them ready to accept a new substation.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see any other questions in the queue. So we're going to go ahead and open the public. All right, is there anything else that staff would like to report on the plating side of the case?
Through the Chair, staff did not get the opportunity to present the staff report. If the Commission would like to hear the staff report, I'd be more than, more than happy to do that.
All right, let's do that. Yes, please.
Okay. This is a preliminary plat of Lot 789, Block 5, a Northern Lights subdivision into one lot with variances from AMC 2180010, dedication of streets, and AMC 2185030A, improvement requirements by improvement area for proposed Lot 7A, Block 5, Northern Lights subdivision. The property is located on the, on the south, located on the south side of, of West Benson Boulevard, west of Bering Street, and north of West 30th Avenue. The reason for this plating action is to combine these lots in preparation for, for an MLMP utility substation. The proposed lot is owned R4, as, as Staffperson McLaughlin mentioned. It's, it meets the R4 district requirements for lot size and width, and is considered a conforming lot of record. This plating action is being accompanied by a request for conditional use. The existing dedicated right-of-way width along the property front, front edge is currently 30 feet. The OSNHP designates Bering Street and West 30th Avenue as local streets. Bering Street and 30th Avenue are currently strip paved sections and do not meet municipal standards for urban improvement areas. As was mentioned, there are two variance requests at this time. I'll address each variance request and the standards for each. The first variance is request for relief from AMC 2180010, dedication of streets requiring dedication of the streets to the public in conformance with the official Streets and Highways Plan. Now, there are four standards. I'll address each standard separately. Standard number one, staff finds this standard to be met. There are special circumstances and conditions affecting this property. The petition site is located in an area of redevelopment where adjacent properties to the east and south are under common ownership. The, the individual that owns the property anticipates redevelopment in the somewhat near future, likely five to seven years. With the type of redevelopment uncertain, full dedication appears to be unreasonable and undesirable at this time. Standard number two, staff finds this standard to be met. The granting of this specific variance will not be detrimental to the public and, public welfare. Petitioner is amenable to a 10-foot dedication which will ensure that the future needs of the public are met. With this dedication, urban improvements can be achieved at such time as they are necessary. Standard number three, staff finds this standard to be met. The granting of this variance would not nullify the intent and purpose of the subdivision regulations or the comprehensive plan. As was stated previously, the petitioner is amenable to a 10-foot dedication which will allow for urban, urban improvements as, as, at such time as they are necessary. This dedication will ensure that the intent of both the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan are met. Standard number four, staff finds this standard to be met. Undue hardship would result from the strict compliance with the, with the provisions, with specific provisions and the subdivision regulations. As redevelopment plans to the adjacent property are uncertain at this time, it is unreasonable to require full dedication. Variance number two, this variance is a request for relief from AMC 2185030A, improvement requirements by improvement area, requiring urban area improvements to include a 24-foot wide paved street with type 2 rolled curb and gutter and a 5-foot wide sidewalk along the West 30th Avenue and Bering Street. Standard number one, staff finds this standard to be met. There are special circumstances and, and conditions affecting this property. As I stated in variance number one, the petition site is located in an area of redevelopment where our adjacent properties are under common ownership. The type of redevelopment is, is uncertain, and improvements appear to be unreasonable at this time. Standard number two, this standard appears to be met. The granting of this specific variance will not be detrimental to the public. Bering Street and West 30th Avenue are currently strip paved sections and appear to adequately, adequately serve the needs of the area. The addition of the utility substation will not increase traffic in the area enough to necessitate further improvements. Standard number three, staff finds this standard to be met. Granting of this variance will not notify, nullify the intent and purpose of the subdivision regulations or the comprehensive plan. As the petitioner is amenable to a 10-foot dedication, urban improvements can be done in the future as needed. Standard number four, staff finds this standard to be met. Undue hardship would result from the strict compliance with the specific provisions and requirements of the subdivision regulations. As a redevelopment plans to the adjacent properties are uncertain, it is unreasonable to require improvements at this time. All that being said, staff would like to recommend approval of the two variances and the plat, subject to the conditions stated on pages 10 and 11 of your staff packet. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Commission at this time? All right. Oh, Commissioner Parks?
To staff, I, I guess I have a question about that sidewalk on West 30th. If this is going to be developed into R4 residential at some point in time, which would be my guess that it will do, it's currently a trailer park, I would have some concern that we're not going to have any sidewalk on that north side of the, of the street. Can you address that, your concern about not having that? Looking at the Title 21 that we've just looked at over the past 10, 12 months, this Commission has, that's one of the big things about residential, is having sidewalks on both sides of the street, but yet you recommend not having it here. Can you please expand on that?
Through the Chair, Mr. Parks, there's a couple different reasons and arguments to be made for not having a sidewalk. The first is that there, there is plans for redevelopment, and we really don't know what that redevelopment may be. It may include some, some vacations of right-of-way, rededication of right-of-way elsewhere. In addition to that, there is the Starne Building which sits due east of the petition site. That particular building sits, I believe, five feet from the property line, and, and to put in a, a sidewalk there just doesn't really, doesn't work. It doesn't make sense. I mean, that's, that's an existing condition that really cannot be changed.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Does the petitioner's representative for case S11929-1 have any additional comments or comments you'd like to make for this case?
Yes, much. Excuse me. Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, still Dwayne Adams of USKH, representing MLMP in this case. To address a, a couple items, I, I guess, one, one thing that you must be wondering is, why is it critical to have this space? Why are we begrudging giving up the, simply five feet? Number one, this, this is an area that is rapidly growing and will continue to grow, and as it grows, there will be a need for additional facilities in the future. So that's, that's one thing, is we don't know what this is going to need just, or 20 years from now. And though, that, with the clearances and the safety distances that are required with respect to the facilities that are going to be in here, it's important to have what we can to make this work. The second thing is, as we pinch in, then what happens is, as we move in, first of all, we don't have the circulation to get equipment in there, and so as it moves around, there's, first of all, the, the, the problems with simply being able to circle around instead of being able to drive around, then we have to start backing up. And unfortunately, when we do need to get to these facilities, it's not the best conditions. If it were always a sunny day and we had good light, that would be one thing, but that's not the case. We've got a relatively restricted site, and the ability to move around and get around this area is pretty critical. So between the simple function of getting around, having the safety clearances that we need to make this work, as well as the fact that... we need to make this work, as well as the fact that in the conditions we often find ourselves and we do have to service these facilities, those distances become rather important. With respect to the sidewalk, it's suggested it may be connecting to an R4. And it's probably with its proximity to Benson, or yes, Benson, probably doubtful that this will be R4 when that happens. This is designated in the comp plan as a mixed-use development. I think that's what you're gonna see. When I've worked with this owner in the past, residential was certainly a part of it, but that wasn't the driving force. And that's not where the finances and the economics are in making these particular properties that are to the east in particular work. This is going to be a tremendously different development from what you see now. Certainly, we're not gonna see mobile homes, but it's not, probably not gonna be R4 development as we know it. Those are the only comments I offer at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of the petitioner's representative? All right. Then we will go into the public hearing portion. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedures. We already know the petitioner's representative has had 10 minutes for each case, and then representatives of groups shall have five minutes and individuals shall have three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. Any individual may request written findings from any commission decision within seven days. Are there people here who wish to testify in either one of these two cases? All right, very good. Then what we need to do as a commission is, since we have combined these two cases, is I would entertain a motion for the amount of time each individual and representative of groups may be allocated for their public testimony. Under most circumstances, it would be 10 minutes total because there are two cases. 10 minutes for representative of groups and for individuals, it would be a total of six minutes. Is that the wish of the commissioner?
Yes, ma'am. I so moved that we make that, make a motion to extend the time from 10 minutes to six minutes.
All right. From three minutes to six minutes or 10 minutes to six minutes?
10 minutes for groups, six minutes for individuals.
All right. Thank you very much. And that motion has been seconded by Peter Malkay. Is there any objection? All right. Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. May we have the first person come forward, please? For anyone who wishes to testify in Case 2012-061 or Case 2000S-11929-1, would you please come forward at this time? I thought I saw some hands earlier, but perhaps it was not for these cases. All right. There is, so I'm gonna close the public hearing at this, well, is there the petitioner's representative, you have time for rebuttal for both cases?
Yes, ma'am, Chairman of the Commission, Mio Johnson from the utility is here, and I think she can better answer Commissioner Pru's questions with respect to what the lines look like, those transmission lines that will enter the site on the north.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
As you know, the transmission, there is a transmission line running down Arctic Boulevard now. It does have one circuit on it. Basically, we are rebuilding that transmission line and strengthening it a bit, and there will be two circuits on it. It'll look pretty similar to what it does now. Right there, crossing on Lot 4 from Arctic into the substation site, it crosses one lot, and that is where it goes into the substation in and out.
Commissioner Pru has a question?
Yeah, do you have a site plan showing this?
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Do you have a plan that we can look at showing the transmission lines coming in and out of the property, where they're gonna be located?
Yes, we do.
What type of towers they are?
If Dwayne doesn't find it, I think I have it. Let's see. No, that's not the one. I think maybe I do, but I'll show you quickly. It's just coming across here, a parking area, and I'll look in my papers.
Ma'am, Chairman, Commissioner Pru's, what Mio was speaking of is on your Page 35 of the plating package.
35?
And that's the preliminary plat. Where she's saying that that line comes in is very close to that north lot line on Lot 4. Now, this doesn't show that line. The actual design drawings are not part of the package.
Can you put it on the overhead? The overhead's working? So, if you could turn the overhead on, put it up for everyone to see.
There you go.
We need the upper lamp on.
This doesn't project real clearly, but you have Arctic Boulevard on the left-hand side running north-south, and it crosses the depth of Lot 4 over to Lot 8, 9, where you can see it coming in. And...
Is that this line right here that you see?
And this is, one of the things, transmission lines are very, very expensive, and that was one of the reasons this was a very desirable site, was the proximity. We had searched for a site for about five years, identified about a dozen sites, narrowed it down to nine, and settled on this site.
These are aerial that you're showing us?
No, they're not aerial. That is a...
This is underground?
Oh, no, the lines will be aerial. All transmission is aerial. The higher voltage, 69 KV and above, is aerial, according to Title 21.
Earlier, there was, the owner's representative represented, there'd be one pole. One pole, I said three poles, there were multiple lines coming in. What?
On our property, but there would be one pole on our property, and then it would extend directly across.
It shows three and six lines.
Well, every, this is a double circuit, so it actually would be two poles, one coming in from the south and one coming in from the north. There would be two poles rather close together and coming into the bus bars.
So, there's not...
So, there, and it goes, coming south, heading north, it goes into the substation, and then it goes back out to Arctic Boulevard and heads north with the other pole. There'll be two poles.
Okay. What am I seeing, three there? Is that? And this, you know, it's very small, so it doesn't show a lot of detail, which you pointed out. I guess, what is it? What am I looking at? There's no legend what each thing is. What's in the center of the box there?
The center of the very box just says "substation." It's "substation Site 1" is what it is, or "Site 1." So, the box, the substation is enclosed in the box, and you're seeing the bus bars that it comes into.
Is that aerial, the bus bar?
Yes, that is aerial, and that has to be aerial. This is 115 KV.
Yeah. I think.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Any other further comments from the petitioner's representative? You still have time remaining?
Anything you wanna wrap up?
No, other than, as I said, we did a very comprehensive search for a site. It took us about five years. We did go before the assembly on this, and they agreed to let us buy the land. And it is a very good site. We turn out very nice-looking substations nowadays, and I think it's very, very needed in midtown for reliability. It's also needed for us to accept the new power generation at the SPP plant or the South Central Plant out by Chugiachi Electric off International Road. And it will, that is new and a very efficient generation, and will use about a third less gas that our existing turbines use. And with the gas shortages we're facing, we're doing everything we can to have efficient generation.
All right. Thank you very much. In regards to Case 2012-061, what is the wish of the commission? The public hearing is closed. Now, what is the wish of the commission? Thank you. Two motions. All right. Why don't you say that to everyone? Yes, please. The secretary has a statement. Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that we do have two cases, but in reality, we need four motions. We need a motion for the conditional use, and then we will need a motion for each variance and a motion for approving the plat. And we do need them on separate motions. So, four altogether. And they are noted on your staff report on Page 5 of the conditional use and Page 10 of the plating case.
All right. Thank you very much. With that understanding, Ms. Dean, you're in the queue. Do you have a motion?
Yes, I move to approve Case 2012-061, conditional use permit for a utility substation per AMC 21 dot 40 dot O60 dot D3 and AMC 21 dot 50 dot O20.
Thank you. Subject to the...
Subject to the conditions on Page 5.
All right. Thank you. And that motion has been seconded by Commissioner Parks. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Pru's?
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to state that, you know, I think this is great that they're upgrading the power system. It's needed. But I have to tell you, it's a power station, it's a substation with transmission lines coming into it, and we've got this very nice set of plans that shows the trees and the plants and the fencing and the outline of the buildings, but nothing of worth that I can understand what's going on with the type of poles, how many lines on the power distribution lines. And it's a transmission system. I guess I'm surprised that staff doesn't require that, but yet we get to see the trees. And I would ask that next time, a utility substation, that we get a plan for the actual product that they're installing. And it would be like having a railroad yard and not showing where the railroad tracks are. We get to see where the terminal is and where the people get to park, but we don't get to see where the railroad tracks actually go. And I'm just surprised that it went through this whole process without some sort of detailed description, the type of power lines that were, are planned to be put in, the type of poles or structures to hold them up, the number, according, so we can actually see the whole picture. Because to me, this is not the whole picture. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Ms. Dean, would you like to speak to your motion?
In this matter, I feel that it fits with Policy 42, 44, 46, 49, 50, 73, 76, and 80. It will not have any permanent negative impact on the neighborhood, and it's necessary for continued service in the midtown area.
All right. Thank you. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Parks. Are there any other comments or findings of fact? Okay? Thank you. Is there any objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, Case 2012-061 for conditional use is approved. Now, can we move on to Case S-11929-1? Ms. Dean?
In the matter of Case S-11929-1, I move to approve the subdivision of three lots into one lot.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Parks. Would you like to, Francis, in the queue, and then...
Through the chair, just to make a point of information, we need to act on the three items here, first being the two variances and the last one being the plat. So, if you could make a motion for the variances first, that would be appreciated.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Whitfield, do you have the same comment or a different comment? No? All right. Thank you very much.
So, can I revise my motion then?
You may.
I revise it to, do I have to do each motion separate for each variance?
That's what I've been told.
Okay. So, I would like to revise my motion to be for the first variance from AMC 21 dot 80 dot O1O, dedication of streets, for S-11929-1.
All right. Thank you. And that motion's been seconded by Commissioner Parks. Is there any comments, findings of fact for you, Ms. Dean?
Can I do my findings of fact at the end with all the...
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Parks?
I would like to make a statement that, you know, I have a little concern about taking away those right-aways and giving it away without knowing what's going to happen to the north of that. I will be supporting this, but I think we need to be careful with it, especially with Title 21, not knowing exactly what the requirements are gonna be for roads and conditions, that we're now making the decision into the future that that road is going to be limited at 24 feet. And I think that's a real concern in that particular neighborhood. Now, it may not be, they may redevelop in such a way that that won't have any access Now, it may not be, they may redevelop it in such a way that that won't have any access issues at all. Uh, however, when we make this variance, we've made the decision for redevelopment for that property into the future, and I think we need to be very careful about that.
Thank you. Um, I concur with your concerns, um, in that regard. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay? Um, is there any objection?
Point of order, unless I missed it, I don't believe she said that her variance was subject to recording a plat within 18 months.
Um, Ms. Dean.
Yes, I apologize. Um, there was one department recommendation, A, and then subsection one, recording a suitable plat within 18 months of approval. I did omit that.
All right, thank you very much. Um, seeing and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Moving on to the next one. Which would be variance request number two. Ms. Dean.
In the matter of S-11929-1, I move to approve for variance from AMC 21.85.030.A improvement requirements by improvement area.
All right, thank you, and may I have a second? Uh, thank you, Commissioner Parks.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I did also forget that there is also recording a suitable plat within 18 months of approval required with that.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Um, are there any, uh, comments, any findings of fact for you? No? All right. Um, anything, uh, is there any objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. Now on to the main motion. The main, the plat. Okay? Ms. Dean, thank you.
In the matter of S-11929-1, I move for subdivision of three lots into one lot, with the recommendations on page 10, 11, and finished off on 12.
All right, thank you. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Malkay, and Mr. Malkay, you have comments?
Not sure if it's appropriate to bring it up now, and I'm not sure what we can or should do, but, uh, the whole fee in lieu, uh, I'd, I'd like to have that checked into further and get, get a little further understanding, because that, this really seemed like the, the fee in lieu would have been appropriate, um, for the variance, and, uh, I'm not, I'm going to support the motion, but I just think that, uh, I'd like to get a further investigation, further report, and see how, how, what, what needs to be done to set that, something like that in motion.
All right, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Prus.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that same concern. I think, uh, what happens to the fee after it's, it's put up is, I guess, up to the municipality, but at least it could be credited to the subsequent developer, uh, down the line. And so at the end, as Commissioner Robinson so rightly pointed out, that the last guy standing doesn't have this tremendous burden, and we do get, we do get positive redevelopment. And, and whether or not the municipality decides to spend it on something different, at least the, the last guy doesn't, doesn't, doesn't have to pay the whole bill. So I agree.
Uh, Ms. Dean.
Uh, Madam Chair, as a point of order, i- at this point, if we did decide to do fee in lieu, um, and we did it, it would be on both variances, or would it be against the plat? Or would it be against the conditional use?
Um, I'm going to let, uh, Dave Whitfield answer that question.
Uh, through the chair, Ms. Dean, uh, both variances have been approved already. You've already acted on them. Uh, the fee in lieu would be for, uh, the need to improve the right-of-way, so, you know, I, I guess you could reconsider the, the approval of the variances, but you've already acted on them, so, um, you know, that's, those are the options that you have.
Uh, Commissioner Malkay.
Yeah, I understand, I think that at this point, we, we felt there was not, it seemed to me we felt that there was not, uh, the mechanism in place. I was just referring to, we, that needs to be checked into for the future. Um, I'm comfortable with letting this one go forward as is, but, um, you know, personally, I, I think that that needs to be researched, and that mechanism needs to be available to us in the future. But I wasn't going to hold this one up, although if someone wanted to reconsider, I, I could be convinced otherwise.
Are there any other comments regarding the fee in lieu? All right. Um, seeing and hearing no other, uh, Mr. Wheeler.
Madam Chair, uh, I did not come here tonight to speak to this case, but having listened to the conversation, I'm a little concerned about this notion that there's no mechanism in place for a fee in lieu process. The, the code does provide for it, so I'm not quite sure what is meant by the fact that there's no mechanism in place. Now, whether you want to do it in this case or not is clearly up to you, but, um, I don't think that legally speaking, there's a barrier to using the fee in lieu process.
Uh, Ms. Dean.
Um, Madam Chair and staff, I don't know if, if we did do the fee in lieu, do we have to decide how much it will be? Or is that, do we just state that the city needs to, um, supply or request a fee in lieu, and, um, we don't have to worry about saying that it's a $300,000 fee in lieu or something like that? Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Wheeler.
The code provides for two options. One, 75% of the cost as determined by an engineer, or a fee schedule. There may not be a fee schedule in place in the regs as established by the municipal engineer, but there's, but there is the 75% requirement in code.
All right, thank you very much. Um, you know, I think we need to take a, a five-minute recess, and we'll reconvene in five minutes. Thank you. All right, this meeting is reconvened. We are, um, in the process of our deliberations on Case S-11929-1. Um, this is a plating action for Northern Lights Subdivision Block 25, Lot 7A. Ms. Dean.
Madam Chair, I'm actually not sure what to do at the moment, um, if we go ahead and reconsider the two variances and those motions, um, and with the intention of requiring a fee in lieu on the, um, subdivision.
Um, if you move for a reconsideration on either one of the variances, those variances will be reconsidered, this case with the variances will be reconsidered at the next, um, Planning and Zoning Regularly Scheduled Commission Meeting, which has been advertised for June 20th.
So can I move to go into Committee of the Whole, so we can discuss what we would like to do?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, and is there a second to the Committee of the Whole? Seconded by, uh, Commissioner Parks. We are now in the Committee of the Whole. All right.
So what is the wish of the commission at this point?
Um, we have Commissioner Phelps in the queue.
Uh, you know, I, I think this is a, a good concept, but what I'm concerned about, and I think this is what staff was alluding to, is that there's no real mechanism to assure that the money that may be allocated for this particular activity is in fact allocated to the activity. I think the problem is that it goes into a general fund, there's no specificity in terms of a special fund, and absent a, a specific way of retaining the money for a long period of time, the intention is not going to be fulfilled. It just, it's going to be general fund money used very generally. And I guess that's the question I would have, is whether or not there's an ability to actually ensure that the money that we might raise by this particular source is allocated to this particular project or entity.
Okay. Commissioner Hickel, and then Ms. Dean, and then-
I, I am not in support of a fee in lieu, even if you do dedicate the funds, in, in my opinion, unless there is some type of permanent fund mechanism, for lack of a better term, uh, that money will get used as a slush fund, and if, I need to cite examples like the remediation funds for Highland, or the, uh, or the Reserve Fund for Building Safety. I mean, there's a, a ton of different instances where if that money's not dedicated, it has the opportunity to be spent, and, uh, for that reason, I will not be supporting a reconsideration.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Robinson?
I, I guess, I thi- I think the point here is, the, the testimony that we heard was that this area is likely to be redeveloped soon, and, and the more you think about it, that's exactly the time where you want all, all parties that are engaged in redevelopment to actually be participating in the redevelopment of that particular area. And I think that if you don't, if you don't ask for the money now, it's not going to be there later. And so I, I, I think that really, we're, we're not talking about fee in lieu, but, um, setting aside the, the, the sort of bureaucratic obstacles, if you will, or the, the accounting obstacles, I guess, um, I, I think it's appropriate to ask MLNP to participate in improvements of an urbanizing district of Anchorage.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there other comments? Um, Dana, were you in the queue?
Yeah. I, I was just going to ask if, if, uh, if the, if the fee in lieu, the money generated is put into the general fund, uh, regardless of where it's been, is it credited to the, to the improvement down, downstream? Uh, in other words, if the municipality elects to spend it on something different, or if they could spend it on something different, which I don't know, um, does the next developer or the next improvement get credit for what was previously done, regardless if the money was, was kept or the municipality spent it someplace else?
Okay. Um, do, do we have an answer to that? Attorney Wheeler.
Through the chair, Commissioners. Typically, if you have special funds, they're placed in a designated fund, and those are reserved and encumbered so that they can't be spent on anything other than the identified purposes of the fund. I do appreciate the Commissioner's comment about the Building Safety Fund. So it does require some diligence on the part of the Treasury Staff and the Finance Department to, to track those funds, but we, it is not uncommon to have designated funds for a specific identified purpose and retain the funds for that and solely for that purpose.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I believe it is appropriate, um, while we're in the Committee of the Whole, to ask the petitioner, um, if we move for, a move for reconsideration, and it goes to the next available publicly, um, publicly, publicized ca-, uh, commi- commission meeting, which is on June 20th, what that might do to a construction schedule. Will you still be working in the right-of-way during that period of time?
Well, on this particular project, we are not working in the right-of-way. We will be working in the right-of-way as we are now, as we're bringing feeders into this site. Uh, but we really, this is just a substation site. It's on property, it is not in the right-of-way. Is the short answer to the question. Uh, but yes, our construction schedule is very critical. We need to be ready to receive power from the SPP Power Plant. We also have a 40-year-old substation, uh, that we refer to as Sub 16. It's down by ACS that is, needs to be refurbished and upgraded. We can't do that till we get this new substation onsite and online and up and working. Uh, so there are other substations down the line that need upgrading to maintain the reliability here in Anchorage, and, uh, Midtown has just grown so rapidly that it's hard to keep up with it.
Um, I appreciate those comments. Could you be more specific in regards to your construction schedule?
Uh, we intend to start construction, uh, the first week in July.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Robinson?
Just real, real quick, if, are we, if we reconsider this particular variance, does that also mean we're not able to, um, we, we're holding up our decision on the plat as well?
I believe that is correct. Hang on, just one, does staff have any comment regarding that? Could you walk us through all of this?
Uh, through the chair, Commissioner, the way that it'll work is if, if you do decide to reconsider the variances, uh, my recommendation would be to hold off on, on, uh, you know, considering the plat at this time until you've decided what you're going to do with the variances. Obviously, the variances need to come first, the plat to follow, so-
All right.
That would be the, the appropriate, uh, yeah, the appropriate way to do it.
All right, thank you very much.
And I could add, I'd like to clarify a thing on that. We do have a motion on the floor for the plat approval, so it would just require a postponement at that point.
All right, thank you. A postponement of the plat and a reconsideration of the two variances.
That's correct.
All right. All right. Um, other conversations from the committee, in the Committee of the Whole? Uh, Ms. Dean.
So I believe what I need to do is reconsider, um, actually, first I need to withdraw my motion for the subdivision, and then, second, I need to ask for reconsideration, um, on both variances.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay? Uh, yes. Um, now, um, are there any other comments while we're in the Committee of the Whole? If not, then I would entertain a motion to come out of the Committee Hall. Thank you, Commissioner Parks, seconded by Ms. Dean. Okay? We are now out of the Committee of the Whole. What is the wish of the commission? Mr. Parks?
Nope, I, there we go.
Oh, all right, sorry. All right. What is the wish of the commission? Ms. Dean.
Madam Chair, I move to withdraw my motion for subdivision on Case S-11929-1.
And that is seconded by, uh, Commissioner Parks.
Then next, I-
I think we vote on that.
Okay.
As it is. All right, so now we're going to, um, given the circumstances, um, I would ask, first of all, do you have any findings of fact that you'd like to make? Um, any comments? Uh, to withdraw a motion? Do we need anything? No, all right, I apologize. All right, so let's use our voting machines to withdraw the motion. All right, that motion is withdrawn. Ms. Dean.
Uh, Madam Chair, in the matter of, um, S-11929-1, both variances that we just voted on, which were AMC 21.80.010 and AMC 21.85.030.A, I would move to, um, have us have a reconsideration at our next meeting, which I believe is June 20th.
All right, thank you very much. Um, that motion has been seconded by Commissioner Parks. Um, Commissioner Malkay, you're in the queue.
Yeah, I guess we've made the motion to reconsider here, we're, we're going to vote on that, and, um, so I guess in the interim between now and then, would it be that the onus on the staff to provide us a report on how that would be implemented, and the ramifications and, and amounts and all that stuff, so we'd get a good staff report on that, uh, to better prepare us for a decision at the next meeting?
Yes. All right. Um, so, um, Mr. Whitfield and Mr. McLaughlin, um, can we expect that report?
Uh, through the chair, through the commission, yes, you can expect our report.
All right, good. Um, and today is Monday, if we could have it, hopefully, uh, by Friday, maybe?
Staff will do their best to have it to you by Friday.
All right, thank you very much. We, we would really appreciate that. Um, in a motion to reconsider, do we need anything else? Uh, any other comments? I don't think so. Question?
Yes, I know that. Thank you. Mr. Prus. Uh, yes, you have. All right.
All right. Can I call for the question and will you please use your voting machines? Thank you very much. All right. That is approved. Thank you very much. All right. All right. We are moving on to...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Go ahead, ma'am. Madam Chair, the next portion of that is to postpone that case to the next hearing, so you probably want to make a motion for that.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Could I have a motion for a postponement, please? Mr. Parks, seconded by Ms. Dean. You motion to postpone?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to propose, to postpone both of these cases for the reconsideration until our next meeting, which is scheduled for June 20th.
And seconded by Ms. Dean, I think the conditional use has also been approved, has already been approved, so we're only reconsidering the variances and the plat? And the plat? Yeah. Yeah. All right. Okay. Just for clarities, is there any objection to the postponement? Seeing and hearing done, that is approved. Thank you very much. All right. We're moving on to case 2012-063, the South Central Foundation. It is a request for amending the conditional use for a habilitative care facility. May I have, may we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This petition site is located south of Lark, west of Grumman Street, and north of East 46th Avenue. It contains a total of six lots totaling 2.3 acres. 153 public hearing notices were sent out on May 14th and to date, I've received no comment from the university area or the Campbell Park Community Council. I have received 12 comments opposing the conditional use and the stated concerns are regarding the number of people, access to Tudor, road improvements, and security. The South Central Foundation currently operates the Family Wellness Warriors Initiative located on two of the parcels at the petition site. It is a prevention program to address the needs of adult survivors of domestic abuse, sexual abuse, child abuse and neglect to reduce the cycle of abuse in the community. The target population includes adults in the helping profession, natural helpers, community or tribal leaders, in addition to parents and adults with histories of harm and/or at risk of extending child abuse and neglect. In 2008, South Central Foundation obtained a conditional use for a habilitative care facility at the petition site. That conditional use was for a 48-bed training facility with 11 staff and, like I said, it was on two of the parcels. The South Central Foundation seeks to expand the facility and the program by increasing the number of participants to 130 and the number of staff to 30, including four additional parcels, constructing a new training center, and future-phase construction of additional housing and expansion of the training center. The program will run monthly five-day and quarterly 10-day training sessions. In addition, the site will also be used for single-day trainings and events. There will be, like I said, a maximum of 30 employees and a maximum occupancy of 130 participants. The participants are bused to the site and remain there throughout the multi-day sessions. There will be 24-hour security during the training sessions to assure safety and that is one of the suggested conditions of approval. The current application includes a site and landscaping plan for full build-out and the elevations of the training center, future elevations of the training center expansion, and the additional dormitory are proposed to be approved administratively as a minor amendment to the conditional use. Since the site plan also includes a parking lot as a primary use on one of the lots, a conditional use for a parking lot is also required and presented in the report. I'll now speak to the findings. Regarding conformity with the comprehensive plan, staff finds that this standard is met. The proposed land use furthers the Anchorage 2020 goal to provide a well-planned mix of public and institutional facilities that meet the health, education, governmental, and social service needs of all citizens. As I will later describe, staff finds that this use is compatible with the surrounding land uses and therefore meets Policy 7, avoiding incompatible land uses. Additionally, staff finds that the conditional use meets Policy 61 to promote the availability of supportive housing opportunities for the homeless and people with special needs. Regarding conformity to the standards for the habilitative care, staff finds that the standard is met. All the R2M and R3 zoning regulations and off-street parking conditional use standards are met. There are no specific conditional use standards for a habilitative care facility. Regarding compatibility with the existing and planned land uses in the surrounding neighborhood, staff finds that this standard is met. Compatibility is determined by weighing the characteristics of site design and impacts of use on the surrounding neighborhood. The new training facility will be architecturally similar in character. The residents will be housed in existing residential structures designed as apartments and single-family uses. The new housing dormitory proposed will be developed in a similar material and color as the training center. A habilitative care facility use is, by definition, a residential use. The treatment component of the training center room is a necessary accessory use to the overall habilitative residential facility. The training facility is 58% of the square feet of the residential component, so it is significantly less an accessory to the residential component. Regarding whether the permanent negative impact is substantially greater than that anticipated from permanent development, staff finds that this standard is met. By right, these sites could support 58 residential units. That would result in 423 average daily trips using the multiplier factor in code. Because program participants will be shuttled to the site, the proposed use is expected to have far fewer daily vehicle trips than that would be allowed by right. The main impact of concern is that of traffic and street improvements. While the use does not meet the threshold of 100 peak-hour trips warranted for a traffic impact analysis, improvement of the abutting right-of-ways is clearly needed to support this development. The petition site has frontage on three roads, Grumman Street, Lark Street, and East 46th. The frontage-abutting lots five and six on the east end of the site lack the adequate 30-foot right-of-way width on all three frontages. There is a 33-foot-wide BLM right-of-way reservation along Grumman Street and East 46th. The roads are not improved to municipal residential standards. The streets are stripped, paved, and do not have curb and gutters, sidewalks, or drainage facilities. According to the traffic engineer along Grumman, there is currently stormwater runoff ponding and pooling due to improper grading and pavement failures along the edge of pavement. Development of this site is a redevelopment of nearly an entire block and road improvements are warranted. I laid on the table photos of the existing situation along Grumman Street. Staff has alerted the petitioner that road and drainage improvements and public use easements may be required during building permit as allowable under 2115-150. If the Planning and Zoning Commission desires to include road improvements as a condition of approval, I have provided also in that document what we recommend as the language. Basically, we're looking for Lark Street east of the proposed driveway and along the frontage of Grumman because this is the area of highest use and greatest need for impact, for improvements. I also want to just, given the conversation on the previous case and discussion of fees and lieu, the Section 2115-150 clearly talks about fee and lieu and I think that many of the same points that we saw on that site, we would see in this site. Does it make sense to require those improvements on one block in a neighborhood that also the surrounding parcels are not improved to? And perhaps this is an appropriate case to consider that as well. When we make under 2115-150, the administration needs to find that the required improvements are reasonably related to the impacts and that the estimated cost is reasonable compared to the cost of proposed development. At this time, the administration has not asked for that information from the applicant. We have not reviewed that information from the applicant and we cannot speak to those matters tonight.
Thank you. There are several questions from the Commission, Ms. Dean, and then Commissioner Phelps.
Through the Chair, my question, my first question is, are the streets being vacated for the right-of-way width on 46th, Grumman, and Lark? And if they're not going to be vacated for the right-of-way, why not?
Through the Chair, Commissioner Dean, the existing situation is that those frontages are not dedicated, so it's not possible through the conditional use process to require dedication. What we can ask for is for a public use easement and so, what I provided in that document that I laid on the table are two conditions. If the Commission wants to firmly resolve road improvements tonight, I would propose that there be a condition to enter into an improvement to public place agreement for, with private development, for Lark Street and Grumman Street on the areas there that I have described. I can read it into the record if you'd like. And also, that we resolve with private development the need to dedicate public use easements for road improvements outside of the right-of-way.
Thank you. My second question was, there's a house that's in the middle of the U and that's surrounded on three sides by this particular conditional use permit and I was curious what the address of that home was and if we have received any comments from the owner of that home or the resident of that home.
Through the Chair, Commissioner Dean, if you could come back and ask me that question, I'd be happy to go through the comments that I've received and try to see if I can answer that, but off the top of my head, I don't have an answer to whether or not I've received a comment from that property owner.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Phelps?
This is going back to the comment made by staff about fee and lieu. Can you give me the citation reference again as 2115-150?
Through the Chair, 2115-150 is improvements associated with building or land use permits. And so, that, in that section of code, it speaks to fee and lieu and it also speaks to the standards for requiring improvements if we were, if the administration were to invoke that during building permit review.
And my understanding is that based on what you said, that really, we couldn't make that second find this evening because that information's not available. Is that correct?
Through the Chair, the administration has not reviewed that information. The applicant may be able to provide that. We have not reviewed it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Robinson?
The Commission, just, this is for staff, through the Chair, it seems like we can either put an additional condition on this conditional use that requires the improvement of these right-of-ways or if we don't do that, it is likely that the issue of the road improvement in the neighborhood will come up during the permitting process. Is that, is that correct? Are they, are they different processes or would that still get its same evaluation when coming in for permits?
Through the Chair, you're correct. If the Commission determines that the potential impact of this development is great enough to require it during the conditional use process, you can require it tonight. You need additional information to make that decision. You could postpone until the staff and applicant can provide that information. It is the administration's intent, I guess, we felt like it was clear, having such clear language in 2115-150 that spoke to the building permit process, that's why we proposed to address it through that way. So, during that process, we have an opportunity to visit this issue of, and if it, the applicant wishes to appeal an administrative decision, that would go through the building permit process regarding improvements, that would go to the plating authority, plating board.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments of staff? All right. We're going to open the public hearing now and we can hear from the petitioner's representative. There, the petitioner's representative has 10 minutes. Groups have 5 minutes and individuals have 3 minutes. The public hearing is now open. May we hear from the petitioner's representative? Please state your name for the record.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, my name is Tanya Hickok, H-I-C-K-O-K. I am a civil engineer and planner with Dowell HKM and tonight, we're representing South Central Foundation and the Family Wellness Warriors Initiative. Tonight, I have Tim Potter, Planning Director at Dowell HKM in the audience, as well as Bobby Outen, who is the Family Wellness Warriors Initiative Director, as well as Dr. Kevin Gottlieb, Vice President of South Central Foundation. I would like to reserve at least 5 minutes for rebuttal, if I might.
Thank you.
As Karen spoke earlier, our application request is for an amendment to an existing conditional use permit for the Family Wellness Warriors Initiative, which is classified use as a habilitative care facility. South Central Foundation's Family Wellness Warriors Initiative program has been around since the early 1990s as a prevention program with a unique approach to addressing the needs of adult survivors of domestic violence, child abuse, and child neglect to end the cycle of abuse. This model provides individuals, also known as natural helpers, the education and prevention tools necessary to reverse the trends of increasing domestic violence. South Central Foundation has found that one of the most critical components of this program is when it takes place in a non-institutional setting that is human in scale. This training approach embraces the residential environment during training sessions to give participants a sense of safety as well as family. The topics covered in these training sessions are very sensitive and personal in nature and every effort is made to have the participants feel safe in their environment. As Karen also spoke to, there are many different types of trainings, including one-day workshops, five-day trainings, as well as 10-day advanced leadership trainings. The current facility is currently located along Lark Street, which is south of Tudor, between Piper and Grumman Street and north of 46th Avenue. The facility is currently made up of two parcels owned R2M and R3. The conditional use that was approved back in 2008 allowed 48 beds as well as 11 staff within a training dining facility. Over the course of past several years, it was noted that the dining and training facility was lacking efficiency since the large trainings were taking place in the same room that they were having their dining so that there would be tear-down and put-back-up between each meal. And so, South Central Foundation felt that they needed to have a separate training facility to reduce the lack of efficiency that they were noting in their trainings. To facilitate this growth, South Central Foundation hired KPB architects as well as Dowell HKM to go through a master planning exercise with their facility, with their properties. This specific conditional use proposes to add four additional properties that are adjacent to... to this facility into the master plan, as well as increasing the number of beds and staff incrementally in accordance with the phasing plan that we've proposed in the application. I believe that's pages 36 and 38 of your packet. The first phase would increase bed counts within the current dormitories as well as adding additional, I believe it's parcel six, and that would increase the total beds to 84 without any additional buildings, except for the new parcel on the corner of Grumman and 46th. The Phase Two would include the new training center, which is proposed to be located along Grumman Street, as well as associated gravel trail connections throughout all the existing buildings. There is also a proposed area of heated trail system between the training facility and the existing dining training facility. We also are proposing dormitory and parking along Parcels Three and Four, increasing the total number of beds to 130. There is also a proposed phase, including a remodel of the existing draining, excuse me, dining and training facility, that would increase the staff then to 30. And then in Phase Five, the final phase, it would be an increase of the proposed training facility, adding additional breakout training rooms. This photograph right here is the, is the proposed design of the new training facility, incorporate natural and natural materials such as cedar, as well as trying to nestle the building into the existing topography to reduce the impact to the surrounding community. As Karen stated before, can I have one more additional minute?
You may.
As Karen stated before, the existing, the previous uses of apartments as well as single-family residents have a greater trip generation than those proposed with this facility, as we'd only have a maximum of 30 staff, and all the participants would then be shuttled from the main training facility. And just to touch briefly on what we have done for our community outreach, Family Wellness Warriors, since 2009, when they've been in the neighborhood, have gone door-to-door and have held several open houses for their neighbors as well as barbecues. And since the master planning has taken place, we've met with Assembly members on-site, as well as going to the Campbell Park Community Council in February, and then inviting those community members, neighbors that attended to tour the facility. And then we went back to the Campbell Park Community Council again in May and received no negative comeback, comments or feedback. So with that, I'll go ahead and save my remaining time for rebuttal.
Thank you. Do we have some questions? Ms. Dean, were you in the queue? Yes, please proceed.
Through the Chair, my question is about going back to the community council meetings. How many people that were from the community attended those meetings?
A handful, like 10, 10 or less, to both of those different meetings separately.
And what kinds of questions did they have and comments?
They wanted to know what the facility, what they did primarily. And Bobby was able to clarify any of those specific questions that they had as far as who comes to the facility, how long training lasts, what topics are covered in those trainings. And she also handed out a CD that they had available for, for the program.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question. It's about the roads. Could you show us exactly on a map? I understand that the roads are, that there's not an adequate public right-of-way. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. This parcel here on Grumman, this one right here.
Uh huh.
That is an existing parcel that has never been subdivided, and so the right-of-way was never taken. But there is a, I believe it is a section line easement there. So we would be dedicating through the building permit process a public use easement for Grumman Street.
And I am a little confused. What are your plans for improvement of the streets? There's, you, you have three streets, right? You have East, 46th, Grumman, and Lark Street. Do you have, if have you, you're asking for variances not to improve those streets? Tell me, tell me exactly again how that works.
Sure. This is, since it's not a plating process, it's not specifically requiring variances for improvements, just through the conditional use promise, process. And as Karen stated, there is a specific code when it comes to building permits as far as requiring off-street improvements. We were involved in conversations with the traffic engineer about the existing concerns that they had and the rights of ways, and we believed we could resolve those during the building permit process. It appears that there, there lacked maintenance over the years. Karen stated that it is strip paved, and there were several potholes that were noted. But it's not localized to Grumman Street. The, the majority of the neighborhood has very poorly maintained streets. And so through the building process, we would assume that there would be some sort of off-site drainage, street repairs.
Could you be a little more specific? I mean, obviously, when you look at a project like this, you, you have to take into consideration the condition of the streets that surround this property?
Mm-hmm. Yes. Well, when you take into, in normal building permit processes, you look at the trip generation rates. And if you go above 100 trips, then you are then required to do a traffic impact analysis. Our proposed project does not, would not reach that threshold by any means. The existing training facility has 11 staff with the shuttles that come back and forth with the 48 participants. This increased to 30 staff, and then the participants increased to 90. The trips generated by that does not reach that threshold. And then when you compare it to the existing trips that would have existed if it was a residential, we're much, we're considerably less in the amount of trips that are generated by this facility. So we don't technically reach the requirement to have any off-site mitigation when you take a, look at it based on trips.
So would you say that the, that the position of the petitioner that you represent is that there does not need to be any street improvements on Larky's 46th and Grumman?
No, not that there aren't any, but that they can be resolved in the building permit process. And Mr. Potter may have something.
I think I did have a pretty extensive discussion with traffic engineering, and it was, at least the representation of the traffic engineer, Stephanie Morrello, to me that, that they would be bringing it up for a full review during the building permit review process, and they wanted us to know that. But the differential here is the question of what the extent of the improvements need to be. Do you really need to take a road that is now a strip paved road that the city has not done adequate maintenance of itself and is responsible for a significant amount of any deterioration that has occurred, and lump that on this property owner to build a three-quarters, basically, street? So a full street without curb and gutter on one side? We don't think that's appropriate. We think the, the nexus is extreme. What our proposal was is to go back, improve the drainage standards. Over time, the ditch that was obviously on the west side of Grumman has been filled, turned into lawn, all kinds of things. As part of this project, we would reestablish that positive drainage, so it would hook into the drainage system that is there. We would repave the existing strip paved road and call it good, because we are having less trips than were there before. And I believe that you understand, Madam Chair, that a significant cost associated with road construction isn't necessarily the pavement on top in that. It's what you have to do to meet the municipal standards. And we just really felt that it was going in excess of $400,000 to $500,000 to build the one-block length of this section of road, when the roads that it connects to will not be rehabilitated. You know, if you wanted to ask me what's really fair, we'll put money in a fund, and it collects interest over time. And when, when the city or the rest of the neighbors chip in, we'll all build the roads the way they should be. But I think it's unfortunate and inappropriate for the city to not do its job and then force someone else to do it. If this was a brand-new project, I was creating a whole bunch of new traffic, there was no road there to start with, then yes, we should be building the entire road up to current standards.
Okay. We have two other Commissioners in the queue, Commissioner Phelps and then Commissioner Robinson.
I think the first parline question's been answered, and that question was going to be, what is your feeling about the staff recommendation dealing with the two additional items about the street development for want of a better term?
Well, I think it reads that it's required for the, to enter into an improvements to public place, and I think we would rather have it to be resolved, the need to enter into a improvement to public place rather than requiring it.
So what would the proposed wording be to resolve? Can you give me some wording?
Resolve the need to enter into an improvements to public places agreement for off-site improvements.
Okay.
And that would be to resolve the level of improvements as well.
Resolve the level of what?
Resolve the level of improvements, whether it's a ditch and repaving and improving the sections of the trainings that aren't currently operating correctly and getting it back to where it was, so it's probably as good or better than it was when the city first built it. Or if the city comes back and says, no, we want you to build curb and gutter where there are no existing now, and there's none connecting to any of these streets, then that'll be the issue, and, and I guess we'll have to build streets if we can afford it, or we just don't do the project.
Okay. You had two parts of that requirement. It's the first, I'm missing the first part. I have this second part, which is levels of improvement. The first part is resolve with traffic engineer the, I missed that part of it. You would give me some wording?
Resolving the need to enter into an improvements to public places agreement.
Public places agreement? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you, through the Chair. I wonder if you could tell me a little bit about the nature of the staffing? I mean, we've talked about 30 staff. Are they, you know, are they eight-to-five staff? How many of those staff are overnight? If you could just sort of characterize that, as well as, you know, in the context that the trips that are associated with the, with that staff? Are they going back and forth to the main campus throughout the day? Be helpful. Thanks.
Okay. Madam Chair and members of the Commission, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Bobby Outen, B-O-B-B-I-O-U-T-T-E-N. We have a total of 16 full-time staff and four part-time staff. We have staff who are located in three different locations. One who is full-time out at Palmer Correctional Center, and 10 who are full-time on the current campus at Lark Street. The remaining staff are located on our main campus on Diplomacy and Tudor Center. The staff are Monday through Friday, eight-to-five, with the exception of when we're holding trainings, and then they are onsite during the trainings. We start at 7:00 in the morning and go until 9:30 PM.
And if I may, and then when there are residents staying there, is there staff staying there as well overnight, 24 hours? And if so, you know, give me an idea of how many of those are staying?
Okay, yes. We have, for every six, we call them participants, trainees, people attending the training, we have two group leaders, and then what we call care team and individualized care that are a part of the training process, and they stay onsite as well. The group leaders and the care team and individualized care.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions of the petitioner's representatives? All right, seeing hearing done, you have three minutes for your rebuttal. All right, four. The public that would now wish to testify, groups have a total of five minutes and individuals have three minutes. If you wish to testify on Case 2012-063, would you please come forward at this time? It's going to be a fairly long evening, so for those of you that wish to testify, if you could all come forward, then it'll be a little more expeditious. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Who's the first person that would like to testify? Would you please clearly state your name for the record and spell it if it's complicated? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Pelto. My last name is spelled P-E-L-T-O. I'm here representing the Campbell Creek Duplex condominiums homeowners association. I believe you have a letter from our president in your packet, so I'm going to just briefly summarize some of the main concerns we have in that letter. This is a three-fold expansion that, as far as we are concerned, is not appropriate for the neighborhood. There's been considerable discussion about Grumman Street and 46th Street. Those are not even the main access into our neighborhood. And unfortunately, the applicant cannot be held responsible for Piper Street. But in reality, virtually all access into our neighborhood is through Piper Street on the south side of Tudor. And as far as we are concerned, until the city takes care of bringing Piper Street up to municipal standards, there should be no expansion into our neighborhood. There's discussion in the packet about the notion that our neighborhood is underutilized. Well, it's for good reason that it should be underutilized, because we don't have adequate roads into our neighborhood. The roads we have now are overutilized, because Piper, for example, takes all of the load from the streets to the west of us, such as Foker Street, because of the realignment of Tudor last summer. So just for those reasons, along with the inadequacy of Grumman and 46th and Lark, those, all of these streets should be brought up to standards before any construction should be expanded upon. Our other concerns as a community, while there had been points made about going door-to-door, I'm sure they went door-to-door straight across the street, but did not take into account the fact that our only way from those of us who live on Grumman Street, in and out of our community, whether we choose to take 46th or Grumman, is to go directly by this facility. Therefore, we are their neighbors. We have no choice. And yet, no one came to my house, no one came to any of our homes in our neighborhood, in the condominiums beyond there, and we are only one block away. And we have to go past this. If you take a look at the map, you'll see where the condominiums are on the loop up against the Campbell Creek Green Belt. In discussion with Peter Hamlet, who is the Campbell Park Community Council President, he told me that, yes, they had come, but the community council has not taken a position on this issue. They have not voted either for or against it at this point. And so it's important to recognize that they have not taken a stand on this. Finally, our concerns regarding security need to also be addressed, as we point out in the letter and has been pointed out in other letters as well. We want to make sure that both the participants and the neighborhood feel safe and secure. So until these issues are addressed, we hope that the Commission will not approve this conditional use permit. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Parks, would you please stay at the podium? Thank you.
Sorry. I was here last week. I should know by now.
We were here last week also. Yeah, thanks. All right. Commissioner Parks.
I would like to ask where your condominium is relative to the petitioner's space. You're on, are you on Grumman?
If you go, if you go south on Grumman, one block from 46th.
Okay.
All right. And then go west, you will see a circle of condominiums.
I know.
That is, that is actually Grumman Street.
Can you flip the map over here for me, please? It'd be easier for everybody to see, I think. It'd be easier for everybody to see, I think.
I can find it on here. Oh, it'll be on the spot, yep. The parcel says I'm making road. South on Grumman, and then, it's all, it's here. So, we're just a block away, when I go, when I go for a walk, I come out this way, if I wanna go to Starbucks, I've got my choice.
All right, thank you very much, we appreciate that, are there any other comment, questions? All right, will the next person please come forward, thank you. Please state your name for the record, and if you represent a group or an individual, yourself.
My name is Robert Seemel, S.E.E.M.E.L., I live across the street from David in the condominiums, my concern is Piper Street, Piper Street is the only light between Lake Otis and Elmore, if you wanna go west on Tudor, you have to use Piper, and in fact, if I was in charge of this project, I would not let the vans travel on Grumman Street. If you look at Grumman Street in the wintertime, where it accesses Tudor, it's very dangerous, that's a dangerous intersection, it's a hill, an icy hill, and the vans coming from the east are still gonna have to come through Piper, and either make a U-turn on Piper, or, or, on Tudor, I'm sorry, on Tudor, on Piper, or turn on Piper and come on up into their units, so, the city really needs to fix Piper, it's, it's in bad, it's a hazardous condition if you look at it at the present time. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Thank you for your testimony, will the next person please come forward?
My name is Matt Rainey, I'm at four-seven-three-six Grumman Street, I'm here to address the commission about, also, there's some concerns about this project. We've talked a lot about the roads, and unfortunately, the roads are due for improvement, but I also feel that there's been a little bit of manipulation of terms tonight, when we talk about trips in an area bringing commercial development into a residential area, and by getting around that, we're talking about buses, so now we're talking about heavy-use vehicles on a road that's already taxed, and we've already heard the comments about how dangerous the approach on the Tudor Road from Grumman Street is, Piper Street, I wouldn't invite anybody here at the commission to go drive on it, it's a, it's a very poorly-maintained street, cannot handle shuttle buses on this already taxed street. This is a residential area, it's not a do or design for a heavy commercial area or business that we have that's proposed here, this is a very large commercial operation, we talk about security, the security is mentioned that it's twenty-four hours a day for up to a hundred and sixty participants in the facility, but also be noted that this security cannot stop anyone from leaving this facility, this is a totally voluntary program, which means that if somebody's there, and they don't choose not to be there, or if they choose to go out and smoke, or do whatever they wanna do, there's no one there that can physically stop them, it's a volunteer program, which is hard for that capacity to be controlled in a small neighborhood like this is. On the traffic report and the documents that you guys have, and I apologize, I didn't bring mine, but it's either page ninety-two or ninety-five, it mentions that, the traffic report from the city and the state mentions that road improvements need to be done before this project is done, or even considered. Also, I don't wanna run past my time here, but I just think that, the use of the facility and what they wanna do with it is great, I just think that this is a wrong place for the facility to, to go into, it's like kinda putting a, a square peg into a round hole. And like mentioned before, the existing homeowners also have a right to feel safe in their environment, the idea of this being a residential treatment facility is great, that people feel comfortable in where they're being treated, but the residents of this area also have the right, they're already pre-existing, we're already there, to feel safe in our environment as well, that's all I have.
Thank you very much, I don't see any questions in the queue, so, thank you for your testimony, will the next person please come forward?
Good evening, my name is Karen Halpin, K.A.R.I.N.H.A.L.P.I.N., I live at four-six-two-eight Grumman Street, I live three houses down from the most recent purchase that South Central Foundation has done, I was informed on Saturday that they're planning on expanding, I personally do not have a problem with the forty-eight participant, however, I do have a huge issue with an increase of a hundred and thirty participants. South Central Foundation has not, in my opinion, reached out to the community, south of Forty-S Sixth on Grumman, no one has come to my door. When I asked a neighbor about the A-frame that South Central Foundation owns, he said, he told me South Central Foundation owned it, but he didn't know what they did with it, he lived directly next door. My understanding in two thousand and eight, they did not intend to expand, but have been quietly purchasing surrounding properties since then. I'm really surprised by all of this, and feel that South Central Foundation has been flying under the radar, and what everyone has commented so far, I'm going to dill on that, so I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, I don't see any questions, so, will the next person please come forward?
My name is Judith Anderegg, A.N.D.E.R.E.G.G., and my husband David and I live at four-seven-seven-zero Grumman. While we are supportive of these facilities such as the one described in this permit, and even of this particular project, we are opposed to any new development in our neighborhood, which will bring in additional traffic in on our overutilized substandard roads, the road issue is not just Grumman, Lark, and one block of Forty-S, no further development should take place in this area till traffic patterns are analyzed for the entire area south of Tudor between Lake Otis and Tozer Track. South of Tudor, all of Piper and Forty-S need to be brought up to standards, including sidewalks, proper curbs, and drainage. This is the third set of comments I have prepared in the last two weeks on this permit, each stating a different opinion as we have learned more about the project, we are still hearing conflicting information from both the municipality and the applicant, we think the applicant has been remiss and narrow in defining what is the neighborhood for the proposed project, and just who should have been contacted and informed of their efforts. We knew nothing about this facility until mid-May, when we received a one-page notice from the municipality, we then began looking for information, starting with a municipal planner, talking with our community council, talking with our neighbors, who also had little information, and meeting the applicant last week at the public hearing last Monday, which was very informative. Since then, I've also had a discussion with Bobby Outten, and my husband was able to tour the proposed facility, Bobby was able to allay many of our fears about the project, but we are still confused about the actual size of the facility, for instance, Bobby told me ninety participants, tonight I heard a hundred and thirty. Some statements in the application about our neighborhood, which we take issue with, are, page twenty-nine states there's broad support by the neighborhood, Bobby told us they basically contacted adjacent property owners. Page thirty-nine talks about the project breathing new life into an enhancing and existing underutilized neighborhood, I cannot let that statement about underutilized neighborhoods stand as a reason for the project being expanded, they may have uplifted life on a few parcels, but if they had driven through the entire neighborhood, they would have seen single-family homes, condos, and numerous apartment buildings, all of which have lively, positive lives going on in them. Page forty-two talks about open houses, to my knowledge, those invitations went to adjacent neighbors, and we were not considered, even though we are a block away, and must pass their facility every time we leave and return to our street. In summary, we recognize facilities such as this are necessary in our society and need a place, but we also feel as neighborhood residents and property owners, we have a right to certain expectations from both such a facility and our municipality, the applicant needs to make more of an effort to contact and stay in touch with us, the neighbors, and the municipality needs to upgrade Piper and Forty-S, the main roads, into and out of the neighborhood, so that the already-existing and anticipated increase in traffic can more easily and safely get around, and I don't necessarily think that's the responsibility of the applicant, we cannot wholeheartedly support this project until our concerns are addressed, thank you.
Thank you very much, I don't see any questions, all right, may I have the next person, please?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, my name is Deborah Daisy, I live at four-seven-three-two Grumman Street, and I do take exception to the additional conditional use request that is before you, for several reasons, you know, it's always a danger to, to our elected and appointed officials when a huge amount of money has already been siphoned into a project, which then sort of makes you feel that you've got to come to some kind of a, a compromise between the community members and this, which is an institution, it is not residential treatment, if it's a hundred and thirty beds, so, in addition to the fact that we live in the neighborhood, and again, had not heard about this, we're looking at a huge amount of pressure from a large corporation, who is, by the way, an arm of Siri Corporation, and so they are for-profit, even though South Central is non, a not-profit, for-profit, and the fact that we always joke about, well, we'd like to see these, but we don't want them in our neighborhood, and the truth is, that I don't believe, as an institution, this is not a transitional neighborhood, that an institution needs to turn it into a transitional neighborhood from residential to commercial, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, may we have the next person, please?
Thank you, good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners, through the chair, my name is Linda Garrison, G.A.R.R.I.S.O.N., and I live at forty-seven-seventy-two Grumman. I'm gonna do a little bit different here, I wanna talk about the history, in two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight, when this facility came up, it was promoted as a small sub-facility that they will be taking a small number of people to, they told us that there would be no expansion planned, if you look at page forty-six in your pamphlet, within one year, South Central had purchased parcel five, within the last couple of years, they have purchased parcel six, parcel four, and parcel three, they also have not told you that they have purchased a property across Lark Street on Woolcot Circle, they have torn that down in anticipation of needing more parking, there's quite a few things that you don't know that are going on, that we have found in this project. Also, they, I attended a tour, I wanted to be fair, so Friday I went to attend a tour, I was negative on the proposal, and unfortunately, when I went to the tour, I found that there was blatant disregard for their two thousand and eight dash zero-six-seven conditional use permit. When I was there, they had thirty cars last week, Monday through Friday, on all of their various parcels, including parking on an R-three, where they don't even have a conditional use permit, when asked about the number of staff they had there, one of the employees told me they had twenty-two, I counted eighteen people working behind desks, one said he was a volunteer, which brings up another question, we need to know how many volunteers they're going to have with this proposal. I then looked at other requirements of the two thousand and eight conditional use permit, they said that they would have a full-time security person when the staff was not there, they have not done that, they said it would be fenced, they have not done that, because basically this disregard, I have filed a zoning, a code enforcement complaint against South Central, based on that two thousand and eight conditional use permit. South Central Foundation, when they first went in, went only to University Park, which is north of Tudor, we are south of Tudor, that is why they got that conditional use, in my opinion, that area was not dramatically affected. South Central never contacted, and they did admit this, they never went south of Forty-S Sixth Avenue, I walked the area between Piper, Grumman, Forty-S, down to the Green Belt, I am convinced that if you were to take a vote right now, it would be almost unanimously no on the expansion. When they say that this is a training facility, that's what a lot of the people heard, and indeed it is, but, you, basically, if you look at page eleven, fifty-three, fifty-four, the facility is for adults who have or are suffering from domestic violence, and that's my three minutes?
All right, thank you very much, are there any questions, just stay put for a minute, Commissioner Phelps?
The question that I have concerns, which you have identified as being alleged violations of the two thousand and eight conditional use requirements, what I have listed here is fencing and parking, and also security, is that the correct listing, or is it different than that?
That is correct, it is security, and if we go back, I believe it, they have a copy of it in the back, page one-nineteen says the property will be fenced, that has not been done, page one-eighteen, we're talking about the two thousand and eight, says there will be a security person at the facility during the hours, there are no staff at the site, and they have not done that, there's no removal plan or anything similar to that.
Thank you.
I have, I have one quick question, I drove the area about four-fifteen today, and I specifically was trying to count the cars, I didn't see thirty cars in any of the, collectively, in any of the parking lots?
There were seventeen there this morning, Madam Chair, and I believe there was one black car on Lark's, not Lark Street, Forty-S sixth, in that area there, we did bring photos, though, if anybody wants to see them, one of the people here has photos, that will, will show that also.
All right, so you counted seventeen?
There were seventeen this morning, yes ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
You bet.
Would the next person please come forward?
Sure, my name is Justin Cornet, I'm at forty-seven-twenty-four Grumman Street, I don't have any facts or figures to show you or paperwork, but I've been a resident at that, that condominium complex for almost over ten years, and just wanna talk to you openly and honestly about what it's like to live there. Several years ago, my neighbor was stabbed almost fatally, I've had several people jump the fence by my house, coming from different, different places, just across the fence from behind my house, couple houses, a couple of condos above my neighbor's patio furniture was stolen with APD getting involved, and several homeless people back there, we have, where we live, as you can see, there's several condominiums, and it's kind of a tight community, so we're kind of in the center, and to the right, there's the Green Belt, where it's known homeless camps are all back through there, and then they're wanting to propose to put this, this rehab place to the left of us, so you're kinda putting, you know, rehab and domestic violence people here, on the other side, you have that Green Belt, where they're trying to clean up the homeless camps, we have multiple cases of violence that come through there, and, and people just wandering through, it's not a safe place to put that, we've had, like I said, several places, or several opportunities, or several positions where, or several cases of violence in there, and if that place goes up, it will, those numbers will grow, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your testimony, could you spell your last name for us, please?
Yes, Cornet, C.O.R.N.E.T.T.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Cornet, all right.
Madam Chair and the board, I'm, thank you all for serving, I think somebody forgets to tell you all that, but even coming here this, last week and this week, it just gave me an idea of what you guys put in as your time on all these different projects, so, thank you. The, I have a property at thirty-two-twenty-eight Woolcot Circle, which is, the only way of getting into that property is you go on Lark, on Lark Street, off of Grumman, to campus, to Woolcot Circle, the, Lark Street does not go all the way through, it, there is a right-of-way, but there's a big steep hill if you try to get off it to Piper, that road is not built through, all the way through there, some of the other roads shown on the map don't, don't go all the way out, like, it shows campus, if you look on the tax map, it's going out to, to Tudor, that doesn't exist because of the steep hill there. Now, I just, Tim was talking about what's fair as far as the South Central paying for, the only thing South Central's gonna pay for is for this road, they don't pay taxes, the minute South Central gets a piece of property, it goes off the tax roll, and this piece of property is not for the people of Anchorage, this is for the people coming from the bush, this is nothing more than a convention center and a hotel, in fact, they started out, I was told by Bobby the other day, they started out in hotels, but they decided that was too expensive, so they bought this property to cut down their costs. The, not, one participant in this will be from Anchorage, they'll all be brought in from the bush. They'll all be brought in from the bush. They talk about the beds and the staff, but they don't count into the people, the volunteers, the catering, merry maids, lawn care, security, whatever else that they need into this here. That's not counted into those people. The parking, yes, there was, oh, last week they had a conference colony there. And so they had on the property, I counted them on Tuesday and Friday, and there was over 30 cars and vans on that property, on all of South Central property. However, the guy told me that, well, I guess he's the number two guy, I forget what his name was, but he says, well, that isn't, that property where they parked at over where the sixplex is on 46th, that isn't part of the conditional use. So that doesn't count. And their staff was only supposed to be 11, where they had 18 during that conference time on the property. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. I don't see any questions. Could you spell your last name for us again, please? Thank you.
David Garrison, G-A-R-R-I-S-O-N.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name's Kyle Newman, K-Y-L-E-N-E-W-M-A-N. And I actually have a really unique perspective on this because I am both an employee for Family Wellness Warriors Initiative and a neighbor. I currently live at 3307 East 46th. I serve as an advocate for the outreach team. My primary role is responsibility for community engagement. And I want to share my perspective. Being an employee, I have a more intimate, detailed knowledge than any other neighbors. And there's a lot of misconceptions I've heard. I'll point one out very quickly, the fact that no one from the Anchorage area has been trained. We've trained several hundred natural helpers that reside right here in Anchorage, myself being one of them. But currently, we hold trainings three to four times a year. So where we're at now is about 49 weeks of vacancy on our property. And I've personally been responsible for shuttling numerous participants, which produces very little traffic. If you look at our 10 full-time staff, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, I think that's already been noted, I believe that it's a substantial decrease from the 29 families which were in apartment complexes as well as the two, the two family dwellings. So that's 31 total. Our trainings are professional. We're equipping natural helpers to have tools and skills to prevent domestic violence. We're not a shelter. We're not a residential treatment. It's a voluntary program. Participants pay $1,500 to attend, which doesn't include airfare. And these are members of the community such as police officers, clergy, professional counselors. But I want to also share that I'm an Alaskan native. You pick originally from Bethel. And I want to take a moment to really capitalize and highlight on some of the participants of our training. These people are trying to bring wellness to the state. They're trying to have healthy families, healthy communities. And as part of our Governor's Choose Respect campaign, which is aimed at addressing and ending domestic violence, we often participate in those activities around the state. And in fact, his administration had honored us for our work and advocacy efforts with the Shirley Dementive Award. I personally take great pride in what we do. We do have excellent neighbors. And many of those neighbors have actually become friends and have participated in the community engagement events that we hold. Not only have we improved each property in terms of upgrading renovations, landscaping, but we also do community work. We clean up the streets between Grumman and Lark. Personally, as a neighbor, I'm appreciative of the work that's done. And I would say that I have a greater knowledge of what goes on, and there are a lot of misconceptions about the program. We continue to plan to enhance and broaden our community engagement, and that is something we are committed to doing long-term. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Do you have a name? All right. Thank you. May we hear from the next, ah, excuse me. Yes. Commissioner Phelps?
Yeah. Ask you a question.
Please come back for.
You said that the community has many misconceptions. If you were to characterize those misconceptions, what would they be?
I think primarily would be that we're a treatment facility for those suffering from addictions, that we're long-term residential housing. What we do is train adults who are in the helping profession. And we're equipping them with tools to go back to their communities to end domestic violence and child abuse. Hundreds of people from the Anchorage area have been trained. I pointed out myself as being one of them.
One of the questions I had is how did they get there? The answer has been bus. But how does that work? I mean, do people come in from the bush, go to the airport, you pick them up there and bring them in? How's that work?
Absolutely. And busing was, when the term bus was used, you kind of envision a school bus. That's also a misconception. Typically, a 15-passenger van. We do multiple trips. Participants will park off-site at our main campus and be shuttled over. We do provide cab vouchers from the airport to the main campus where we get them.
So you have a main campus somewhere and you bus them from the main campus as well?
That's correct.
So the image I'm getting is an area that's served primarily by, I'll call it, minivans and sometimes taxis. And that, it, does it occur at particular times of the day?
Sorry, I don't understand your question.
When do people come to your facility? When do they come there?
They usually come Sunday evening at about 5 o'clock is when we do registration and check-in. And we want participants to, we have security there that's provided overnight, and there's a mandatory curfew of 11 o'clock.
Well, given the people that are attending this and given the fact they're spending $1,500, why is there a need for security?
That's just corporate policy and it's really just to ensure that the campus is safe.
So they will occur, they will come there on Sunday. Now, are they a resident there throughout a period of time? How long is the period of time?
Typically, the training is five days, at which time they stay on campus. And as mentioned before, it's long days, 12, 13 hours, and participants generally stay there.
So what I'm getting now is the idea that they come in on Sunday, they're registering Sunday, and then they stay, that is, they're on-site for a period of time and they're bussed out again?
No. They stay throughout the week in the apartments that we provide, which remain vacant a majority of the year.
Where are the apartments?
The apartments are on our property.
Where's your property? You mean this property here?
No, on our 3210 Lark Street.
How far away is that?
It's, it's on the property. You can walk directly to it 20 feet.
Do you walk to it then? Okay. So it's walkable. Tell me your feelings about this issue about Piper Street.
Being a resident there, I do agree with a lot of the statements. Piper Street could use some upkeep and maintenance. Personally, I don't drive. I am a bicycle commuter, so it doesn't really impact me, but I do see where a lot of the other residents have commented on.
So one of the commenters made, made a statement that this is not a transitional neighborhood, it's really a residential area that the use we're talking about now is really inappropriate for that location. What's your sense about that?
I don't find it to be an inappropriate place because we're bringing safe people to the campus to equip them with those tools. The residents aren't transient. We don't provide those apartments for any other use than the one-week trainings that we provide throughout the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Will the next person please come forward?
Hello, Madam Chair and members. My name is Wendy Laird. I am a, Laird is L-A-I-R-D. I am a president of Grumman 4744. And I am here just because I am a mom and I'm very concerned about this information that I just learned about a week ago. And my concern is for the children. We're talking about school-aged children. They're going to be walking in those inappropriate or small, narrow streets with added traffic when there is snow piled on both sides, and it makes narrow streets even more narrow. And like the rest of my neighbors stated, there is need for upkeep and perhaps even more. But I'm just very frightened about all of these changes that are happening suddenly because we weren't informed about this. Like I said, I just learned about this one week ago. And as others have stated, nobody came to my door or mailed me anything about this huge facility, which sounds like it's doing great things. I think it's a great program. I just don't think it's the right place in my neighborhood because of its magnitude. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your testimony. Would the next person please come forward?
Hi. My name is Jennifer Kriener, last name K-R-I-N-E-R. In 2008, my husband and I purchased a house on Campus Circle, 4631 Campus Circle, which is the cul-de-sac that would be directly across from the facility. We are a young family, obviously you can tell. We didn't care that our neighborhood had the hodgepodge of single homes, condos, even a couple really dilapidated trailer homes off of the Piper and 46th intersection. We didn't know that there were a lot of transients that hung out at Campbell Creek Park and that there was some type of a shelter across from the Holiday Store off of Tudor. And through the years, we've unfortunately seen the problems that, in the neighborhood that are caused by them. The stabbing and the robberies, along with dead bodies being found on the Green Belt. So it's already an issue for my kids to play outside. I don't think it's a good idea to have a facility like this in the neighborhood where I'm at due to the fact that our neighborhood already struggles. And we're not an aging community. I'm a young family. She is a young family. No offense to some of the older folks in the condos, but you've obviously been there long enough. It's your home, it's your neighborhood. And I mean, would you want this next door to your house? So, that's it.
All right. Thank you for your testimony. Will the next person please come forward?
I'm listening a lot to the testimonies here, and I'm still very confused about who are the people living in those places that they have bought? Are they, if you don't understand my accent or want me to repeat it, please say so, and I will slow down or repeat it again.
If we can have your name, please.
My name is Siw Waters. First name S-I-W, last name Waters, W-A-T-E-R-S.
Thank you.
I've lived in the neighborhood since 1972. Now I live on Campus Circle, and that is opposite from the facility. But I listened to this training and then at the same time, security guards? Is it two security guards for every six people? Is, are the dangerous people going to move in there? Am I supposed to be concerned? That's my question. Because I've tried to listen to all this deal and this kind of wrapped up in training and they're going to be this and that. What is happening actually? What kind of people are moving in there? Are they child abusers? Are they domestic violence people? Or are they training people who's going to go out and help those people in the bushes? Nobody said that, really. That's my question. What kind of people are moving in there? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Will the next person please come forward? Is there anyone else who wishes to testify? Please come forward.
My name's Henry Myers. I reside at 4618 Grumman Street. I was just made aware of everything that's going on just this weekend. I'm extremely upset by what's going on and all the flying under the radar, being that I live south of 46th Street. I was not made aware of any of this. I just got a few extra comments. I've witnessed the degradation of the roadway surfaces with the excess of traffic. Piper Street has, it's literally become a one-lane roadway. It's normally a two-lane roadway, but the one side is so potholed up at the present that people only use one side of the road. The last, last winter, spring, the A-frame that South Central acquired, there was people parked all up and down the side of the street, pulling off and bringing the mud and the, tracking up the whole roadway surface with nothing but mud and dirt and just made it horrible. And I've got, I've got concerns of the excess crime. I've witnessed, I've witnessed break-ins in my own driveway with people, with friends parked there. At this time, I do not believe with this amendment at all. I purchased my home in February of '07, and I was not made aware of any of this. And I'm extremely concerned with what's going on, and I hope that that can be addressed in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify? Would you please come forward? Thank you. And if I could ask if there's anyone else in the audience that wishes to testify, if you could please step forward at this time and sit in the front row so that we know who else is needing to testify. Thank you. May we have your name, please?
Yeah. Good evening, Madam Commissioner and Committee Members. My name is Bob Halpin, H-A-L-P-I-N. I'm a vested property owner on 4628 Grumman Street. I don't think that I want to speak to the effects of the program. I think that it stands with good merit and serves a legitimate purpose. We, my wife and I have lived in villages for more than a decade. We've seen firsthand these problems, and we understand the requirement for mitigation. I want to speak to the location for this project, which is in an established residential community. It has come to many residents as a surprise. I don't think that there was a very appropriate outreach program undertaken by the South Central Foundation in announcing its program or its intentions, which is why you hear that there's some conception of misrepresentation and misunderstanding. This is because no one in the history since 2008 has ever so much as knocked on one of our doors and introduced themselves. I think that's lacking and faulty of the South Central Foundation. That's why you hear comments like they're flying under the radar and so on and so forth. There are many people in my community which can't follow this process online. They can't print out the 72-page amendment application. They could read it if they were given it. They could better understand it, and then they could better position themselves to comment about it. But I think the location for this project is entirely wrong. I don't believe it belongs in any residential community, never mind my own. I think the program is probably adequately suited and maybe even better received at the corporation's headquarters, Tudor Center Road, Diplomacy Drive, wherever those landholdings are over there. I just don't understand, and I haven't received an answer yet today, as of today, as to why this location was chosen in the first place. One thing that's important to hold dear to heart is in 2008, when this thing was first put forth, it was limited in its size and it was to be the last development. And now we're looking at a major amendment which would triple its size, its function, and its capacity. So I don't believe that the community's been well enough informed to know and get the answers that they require to make an appropriate judgment. And I don't think that the Council should take any action on this until everybody gets better informed. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. May we have the next person? Please come forward.
My name is Sally Janis, J-A-N-I-S. I reside at 4716 Grumman.
Thank you.
And start with one comment. If you refer to page 98 on this thing, item C, roadway improvement shall be reasonably related to the impacts associated... related to the impacts associated with the use. The Traffic Division requests that roadway improvements be provided at the cost of the applicant for upgrading the existing storm, drainage, roadway, shoulder, pavement, section, and curb and gutter along a segment of Lark Street and the entire length of Grumman, and a segment of East 46th, on page 46. I might just add that, no, yes, I am basically against this expansion. We have been a residential neighborhood. I'm really concerned about the safety. If they have safety provided there, it's a facility, it must be, there's a reason for the safety. You know, who's taking care of us? Anyway, and, so I think that's all I've got to say.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Commissioner, hang on, just one second, please?
Sure.
All right, Commissioner Pruse.
Yeah, could you tell me again where that, what page you were referring to?
It's page 98. It's the last page.
Yes, I see it, thank you.
You see it, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify? Anyone else at all? All right, then, we have the petitioner's representative, and I believe you have four minutes. Three minutes?
Forty-three seconds.
And forty-three seconds.
Three minutes and forty-three seconds. Okay, let me know when you start the clock.
And you're on.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, my name is Tim Potter with Delhi's Cam. I hope that there's questions following this, because this is a big issue, there are a lot of items. Let's see, I can say that I was there in 2008, I was involved in the original approval, and it was never stated that this was not going to be enlarged. It was never stated that way. What was stated is that it would not turn into a treatment facility. And it's not a treatment facility. As far as the gist of this, there seem to be several issues, one of them being the contact or upfront notice to the community. We did do an outreach to the Community Council, which is the based-on-charter approved method for grassroots communication to the community. We contacted both Assemblypeople, had them over to the area, which they got a full briefing, because they often get called about what is going on in the community. I'm terribly surprised that Debbie Daisy, who goes back a long time and is very well aware of the Community Council process, was not informed, at least is not on their email list, or even getting a mailed notice. It's very frustrating to me that everybody can sit tight in their house, and I know that this is an issue that the community or the Commission has talked about, is what is adequate notice? So the city sends out a notice, we put up signs, there was a door-to-door, didn't reach down to the condos on 46th, but at one point you draw the line. There have been open houses that have been attended by some of the surrounding neighbors to visit the site, see what's going on during those open houses. So it's an interesting deal. There has been a real attempt to reach to the area. I apologize that most of the neighbors don't appear to be even on an email list or mail out notice to the Community Council. And I hope tonight that everybody will get on the list so that they get those notices and know what's going on. As far as the scale of this project, the traffic is going to be much less than what was currently or was there when it was a residential development. I will say that with interest, it was very interesting at our pre-application meeting with the city agencies, that the member from the Police Department, which there is typically not, and Tyler would know this, that there's typically not a police officer there, but there was one there at this pre-application meeting. He suggested that it would be very nice if South Central Foundation could actually buy a couple more of the apartment complexes in the relatively close nearby area, because it would be a huge improvement, and the facilities that they had already purchased and were planning to tear down, of which they've torn one down already, was a big improvement. If you look at the statistics, the crime statistics have gone down, except for what we appear to be continually dinged with, and that is the population primarily from the rescue mission and the camps that were allowed to stay there because of the ACLU for months and months and a year. My client has also been the subject of break-ins, therefore the security, so that they provide security for their own property and the people that come to their program. I would really like to have Bobby, and if there's not enough time, talk about what really happens here and give an outline of the last couple of sessions, who the people were locally and from around the state that actually paid their 1,500 bucks, got credits from the university to be there.
Thank you. There are some questions, so if you'd stay put. We have several commissioners in the queue. Ms. Dean?
Through the chair, on page 79 of the staff packet, on page 79, there is the proposed training center with two expansion areas drawn. So the future is to expand the training center, correct?
The, there was a lot of discussion about the appropriate way to go forward with this project and this approval. One was to just show what you intend to build now, and one is to fully expose what your plans are for the property over time. Therefore, what we have in front of you is for the full-phase development of the project, which includes future breakout room areas, expansions to the training center. Doesn't mean that there'll be more people, it just accommodates more area of different types of areas for breakouts in different group sizes. Likewise, one of the apartment buildings that was acquired has been razed, and it's gone. It's been topsoiled and seeded right now, so that it wasn't a disaster. That was a pathetic structure that needed to be burned or torn down. The police indicated specifically that there were issues associated with residents within that building. There is another apartment building that's on-site. The remaining tenant that had a lease has just run out. That is where the objectionable parking occurred, here within the last few days during the Elite Training Session. That building is proposed to be torn down. That area would be used for parking, and there would be a new apartment dormitory building built where the old structure was, that's been torn down. So this is tried to lay everything out as to what's been proposed.
At what point triggers another conditional use permit?
It would be our proposal that, within the context of this, which we've shown the development fully in those phases, if we went beyond that, modified it, or changed the program, which this conditional use that we currently have and that we are proposing to expand is specifically for this program, it cannot be changed to a different program without coming back to you for approval through a public process.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Commissioner Pruse.
Thank you. We heard testimony on, about the original, about compliance with the original use, or original conditional use permit that was given, and the lack of compliance with the fence, and the, now, could you speak to that, to those, to that testimony, where some of the conditions in the original use?
The testimony on the fencing, I want to go back and look at, because I know that it was fenced, and there was an existing fence along Lark, and that had been left in place. I couldn't tell you exactly what the current status is. There were fences that were between the residential that was not owned by South Central Foundation at the time, and I guess I'd have to ask them if there are any of those fences missing. Did that occur after they purchased those properties? As far as parking, technically, they should not have been parking in a lot. That was associated with the residential building that had just been fully abandoned. That is a residential parcel, zoned residential, was not part of the conditional use, and people that are working there for staff parking should not have been parked there. Likewise, any of the participants in the Elite Program should not have been there either. That was an oversight and probably a result of having a parking lot there that no one was using, and poor communications on our part.
Thank you. Commissioner Phelps?
So I have a series of questions, I guess as you might expect. One of the comments made by, actually, comments made by quite a few petitioners is that this is a residential area, not a transitional area, that this type of use is not appropriate within this area. Would you speak to that?
This is a residential area that has the zoning that accommodates conditional uses. If you can incorporate them into the community and make them compatible with the surrounding area. That's what I believe was approved the first go-around, of which many of the people that are testifying tonight did not come and testify at that hearing. And that is what we are proposing. We've gone to great lengths, both in the context to the design, the land use, proving up over the last few years on the shuttling capability and maintaining the area, that it is very possible to operate that way and be totally compatible with the community. You know, I want to make sure that the reference to those people, this is a significant program, and I really do hope that someone asked Bobby Outen, just give examples of the last two groups that came through, and who are they? And that was one of the questions that the community asked, who are these people? So please ask her that question. But yes, it is a residential area. This has been maintained as partly the existing residential buildings that were there, in part, replacement of an existing building that was worn out. The single-family home was turned into the facility that housed the kind of auditorium meeting hall area that was added on. That was an existing ranch-style home, that was on a large lot, and it was built and done in such a fashion that most people, in fact, I'll just give you an example, neither, and I don't want to make a bad comment here, but neither LV, Gray Jackson, Assembly Rep, or Mr. Trainey found it without having to call us again while they were driving around the neighborhood looking for it. So I would challenge you to drive through the area and question whether or not it jumps out at you as some rehab center, or anything out of the ordinary with the community.
Next question, on the conditional use for off-street parking. There's, is there a specification of a number of spaces for off-street parking? Is there a specification for the location of that? The question I'm asking is, you're asking for approval of the conditional use for parking. What specifically does that mean?
That is where the lot, where the offending parkers were, were in the multiplex building that the last-
Lot number? What's the lot number?
It would be this lot right here. No, with the lot, lot 24G.
24G?
Yeah.
Okay.
So there was an existing, or there is an existing structure there that will come down at some point in the future, and that full property will be developed as a parking lot, and that will service the overall facility and the dormitory that's proposed in one of the future phases.
So how would you spread the number of parking spaces there, because the people are being bused in? So what are you providing it for, the staff?
Yes, we are providing, we have to provide, and 41 parking spaces, based on the habilitative care requirements, based on beds.
Okay. So what I'm getting is that you're talking about a parking lot, not a parking structure?
It is a parking lot.
Parking lot?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to draw your attention now to item number two in the Department of Recommendations, and this goes to the issue of who are your clients, okay? And my reading of this is that we are approving this, a program for adults who have or are suffering from domestic violence, child abuse, and/or neglect. My understanding is you're providing a learning environment for helping professionals to guide people that have these experiences, which is different then, because this statement is that these people have these problems, and that's not what's being characterized here.
Well, you know, I never got beat by my dad, but I could have been. And many of the professionals that come here, actually it comes out, and that's why it's such an intensive training, that it's determined that many of the people that come here, even as professionals, have had this type of abuse sometime in their childhood or their adult life. And it comes out as a significant issue in this training. So while the primary focus is teaching people that can then go out and deal with and teach here in Anchorage and around the state, it's not to say that some of those people haven't had or survived these issues.
Yeah, the point that I'm trying to draw is that, are you dealing with that individual or those individuals in terms of their chronic problems? Or rather, are you dealing with individuals who have had those problems, that've gone beyond them, and are coming to this facility to learn techniques that would mitigate these problems in village environments in the future? This is kind of like the nubbin of the problem, I think, or one of the issues.
Madam Chair and members of the Commission, Bobby Outen. I don't know if I need to say that, spell it a second time. I am a, the clinical director, licensed professional counselor, survivor of domestic violence. The training that we provide is approved by the Alaska Pacific University for both undergraduate and graduate level credits. It is approved by the State of Alaska for multiple licensing boards for CEUs, whether it be for education or for counseling. We do target, excuse me, we do target natural helpers. We define natural helpers as a safe person. Traditionally, that might be a teacher, a police officer, a firefighter. We had a training in March in Bethel, and a training locally here in April. Of the people who were present, we did have a teacher, a firefighter, a judge, a lawyer, multiple pastors, multiple chaplains, a probation officer, and many, many mental health professionals and counselors. We do target natural helpers. Many of us are survivors, many of us have our own stories. And we do accept applications for people who may not fall into the realm of what we consider a professional helper, but who have experienced trauma based on childhood sexual abuse and/or domestic violence. Did that answer your question?
Yes and no. I'm actually directing it back to Mr. Potter, and I'm looking at the language of that particular requirement. And the language says that this approval is for a training and treatment program for adults who are suffering from these problems. That is not what you characterize this program as being. You're characterizing this program as being a training program for professionals in the field that result in certification that allows for these individuals to provide remedial training in villages. I think that's what you guys are doing. But it doesn't say that here. It says that you are basically, we are going to approve a facility that's really for people who have problems.
Well, let's go back and read it again.
Please refrain from clapping.
The final conditional use approval is for a habilitative care facility operated by South Central Foundation for a 130-bed adult training and treatments program for adults who have or are suffering from domestic violence, child abuse, and that. I can see where you could do that. I did not write that condition. This is, I believe, the staff's recommendation. We know what the project is. I think that when it says training, it's training, and as Bobby indicated, there may be people here, because anybody, you could apply, I could apply, I might not get in, you might get in. I don't know if you've had issues in the past, Mr. Phelps?
Mr. Potter, let us refrain from those types of remarks. Mr. Phelps, do you have other questions?
I do, yes.
All right, let's proceed.
I had a question about adding another requirement, eight, I guess it would be E, where you, the design and designing a permanent structure- be, E, where you, the design and siding and permanent structures and the design treatment of the structures would be added as a condition.
Hey, could you repeat that again?
This is eight, new, eight, E, and one of the criteria would be, in the review, the design siding and permanent structures and the design treatment of these structures. Yeah, if you look at eight, this is for a revised site and landscaping plan, and one of the issues is going to be of the design of those structures. And the arguments been made in the staff packet, they're going to provide similar structures, but there's no requirement for design review of that aspect in the conditions here.
Our understanding was, in working with the staff, that it would go back to the staff, and they would do the oversight review, and that your approval would say that they needed to be done, and it was our intent, as we've indicated in our proposal, and application that they would be very similar to, same materials, and in context with the neighborhood and the rest of the stuff on the development. If you would like us to come back on the basis of each time we do the residential facility or do the additions to the main facility, we certainly don't have a problem with that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Phelps, another question?
No.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Malkay.
I think, Commissioner Phelps already got to the gist of it, so I think I'll withhold my questions for staff.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you. Could you describe a little bit the phasing process? How long, I see it laid out, and it's probably in there somewhere, but how long is that intended to sort of take to get, you know, through the various phases?
Well, Mr. Robinson, as you know, working for a nonprofit now, that sometimes it's subject to grant funding and funding. We're actually looking at up to a 10-year program.
Thank you. I mean, the reason I was asking is, you know, we've heard a lot of testimony related to people wanting to be aware and be in, you know, everyone has their opportunities, and a lot of times, you know, people don't come until they see the letter. That's just the way it goes. You know, but that said, as the facility grows, I wonder if the petitioner would be open to, you know, sort of various times, perhaps during those phases, to have opportunities to, you know, have conversations or check-ins with the commission on sort of a status. Again, I think a lot of what we heard that are some of the problems in the neighborhood are likely not coming from this facility. That's clear. You know, that said, I think, is there some way that as it grows, there can be an opportunity to have those conversations with the community? Wonder what your thoughts are on that?
You know, I think it's an open book from that standpoint. I don't, I certainly don't, and I know that South Central Foundation doesn't have a problem letting people know what it is. It's an open door. They would love to have more people come to the open houses, participate, and see what does go on there, and what they're doing, and know them as neighbors. And they would like to know everybody else's neighbors. If there is an annual reporting so that on a certain day every year, you'd like us to come back and report on the status, what's going on, what grants we've applied for, when that construction might come forward, when we might come forward for design approvals for the different phases, any of that, that would be fine. If it's a monthly report to the community council, and that goes out in their newsletters electronically or in paper, that's fine. If we could get everybody's email address or mailing address, you know, we'd be more than happy to send out mailers to everybody as well.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. I think you've answered the question.
I just wanted to qualify that there is a bit of a danger. Mr. Halpin indicates that there was not something emailed to him, that he did not receive it, and I guess we're in a little bit of a-
Mr. Potter, I think you've answered the question from Commissioner Robinson. We have lots of people in the audience. We have another case, and we thank you for your time.
I would simply-
Thank you. Ms. Iverson, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to, I struggled with defining the population myself. And the clearest place I could find it was in the application that was submitted on page 53. They have a sentence that describes the target population, and I think it's accurate to what the woman from South Central Foundation said, and that says, "Adults in the helping profession, natural helpers, community or tribal leaders, in addition to parents, adults with histories of harm, and/or at risk of extending child abuse and neglect." That's what the applicant provided in their application as the target population. And I, the application also included elevations for the training centers, so that's provided tonight. The only thing that we don't have elevations for is the one new housing unit. If you want to look at including that condition, I think we need to find another place for it. So I know you, I don't want to take up any more time. If you want me to say where I should, where that should go, I'd be happy to.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any other questions from the commissioners at this time? Commissioner Malkay.
I guess to the staff, just need a clarification. My quick read of Title 21 here, habilitative care facility would be authorized as a conditional use in R-2M, but my read is that a training center is not authorized in R-2M or R-3. Is that correct?
Through the chair, a habilitative care facility is a conditional use in both R-2M and R-3. The residential component of this, the housing facility, is primary. The training center is accessory to the main use as a residential habilitative care facility.
The question is, is a training center, my quick read is a training center has to be in a PLI. Because I think the primary purpose of this is a training center. I don't think this is an habilitative care facility.
I'll look through the code to answer that question.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Phelps?
I just, based on what the staff is saying, is that if we were to add a condition about design, you indicated would not be appropriate under eight. If it's not appropriate there, where would it go?
Through the chair. So, condition eight are requirements to revise the site and landscaping plan that would be required before any development occurs. So if you want to review the elevations of, say, the future phases, it shouldn't go under number eight. It should be an entirely new condition.
Actually, what I want to review are the texture and context of the structures. That's one of their points, is that they want to have compatible structures similar to what they have right now. I would think that'd be part of the site plan review.
Through the chairs. On page, on page 84 and 85 are elevations of the training facility, which is the first phase of development. And then also in the application, in their narrative, they speak to the treatments and materials for the training center. So I believe that for this first phase, that information has been provided in this application.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
What is the wish of the commission? The public hearing is now closed. What is the wish of the commission? Commissioner Phelps?
Okay. In the case of a minor amendment to an existing conditional use, case 2008-067, for a habilitative care facility in the R-2M and R-3 district, to increase the number of participants and staff, and to add four additional parcels in order to construct a new training center building, and to allow future phase construction of additional housing, and a conditional use for off-street parking. I move for the approval of that request, subject to the conditions that are identified on pages 11 and 12 of the staff packet, but with certain changes to those conditions. The first would be, and a conditional use for off-street parking on lot, and I'm going to ask staff to identify the lot. It was specified as being 24G, but I don't think that's correct. So whatever that lot number is, I want to stick it there, okay? And then on, by the way, that's at the end of the first paragraph. On item two, it would read differently. This final conditional use approval is for a habilitative care facility operated by South Central Foundation for a up to, so up to, a 130-bed adult training, and then begins differently, program dealing with issues of delete and treatment program for adults who have or are suffering from. And so it would read, 130-bed adult training program dealing with issues of domestic violence, child abuse, and/or neglect, period. And then new sentence, the incidental treatment of, incidental treatment is considered a part, but a limited part, of this program. And then go down to the end of the paragraph that says, "There will be a maximum of 30 staff." I would say there may be a maximum up to 30 staff. Continuing then, I would add a new condition nine. The applicant shall provide a status report on an annual basis to the staff and to the planning commission on adherence to the requirements specified in this conditional use. Add a new 10. Modification or change to this conditional use cannot occur without the revision of, or the provision of a new conditional use application. And then, yeah, that's fine. I'll stop right there.
Do we have a second for the motion? Do we have a second for the motion?
A second.
Who said that?
I'm not in the queue, madam. I can't log in, so-
All right, all right. Thank you, Commissioner Robinson. So it's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Prues.
Thank you. Couple things. One is I'd like to offer a friendly amendment, but first I'd like to get clarification.
All right. We have a procedural matter? Okay?
We don't do friendly amendments, so you'd have to move it as an amendment.
All right. Let me ask the first question. First question is, could you explain again, are you removing anything that has anything to do with treatment?
No, I'm not removing it entirely. What I am saying, that treatment is considered to be a part of the program, but not a primary aspect of the program. The primary aspect of the program apparently is teaching, training.
Well, I guess, to me, then that really means I can still do treatment and call it what it is.
That's, that would be correct, that that wording would allow for incidental treatment. So if you disagree, you would drop that second, sentence that deals with incidental treatment.
Okay.
A minor correction, Commissioner Phelps. It's a major amendment, not a minor?
Thank you.
Yep.
Can I add one condition, one more condition, or can I do it procedurally?
I have to ask the secretary.
I'm wondering if we're too far along at this point.
I don't think there's objection, Karen.
The further condition would be, I guess it would be a new 11, which would be the requirement that alternate transportation of people utilizing this facility be required to occur in the future.
Commissioner Malkay.
The Title 21 definition of an habilitative care facility means a residential facility, other than a correctional center or transitional living facility, the principal user goal of which is to serve as a place for persons seeking rehabilitative or recovery, rehabilitation or recovery from any physical, mental, or emotional infirmity, or any combination thereof, in a family setting as part of a group rehabilitation and/or recovery program, utilizing counseling, self-help, or other treatment or assistance, included but not limited to substance abuse rehabilitation. And I don't think this met that definition. I think we have a training center here. And I asked the staff earlier, I don't think a training center is a conditional use for an R-2M or an R-3. I think it has to be a PLI. I don't think this is authorized in this neighborhood.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? No, you, no. All right. Ms. Iverson, you are the staffer. Do you have a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not see a training facility as an explicit permitted use or conditional use. To answer that question directly, I also want to, just as a point of order, I'm not sure, Commissioner Phelps, on your proposed modification or change. I just, I want to be clear on what your intention is. The department recommendation is for approval of a major amendment to an existing conditional use for habilitative care facility in R-2M and R-3 district to increase the number of participants and staff, to allow four additional parcels in order to construct a new training building, and to allow future phase construction of additional housing. So does your amendment perhaps mean that that last, "and to allow future phase construction of additional housing," that you don't think that that should be part of this approval, and that that would constitute a modification and should be brought back to the commission?
No, I think that what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to execute or implement that, this requirement here, okay? And my wording has, incidental treatment is considered a part of the overall program, essentially. So the idea of a new training center and to allow phase construction of additional housing would be allowed under my wording.
All right, thank you. We have Commissioner Parks.
Madam Chair, I would like to move to postpone this until we can get a reading from staff regarding the treatment sitter as being a modified use on this property, on this zoning.
All right, do we have a second?
I think I have to withdraw my motion first, don't I?
No.
No, don't?
A motion to postpone takes precedence, according to the secretary. It's been moved and seconded by Commissioner Malkay. Is there any objection?
I think we need that answer.
To, we need a date specific. I, uh, date, um-
Right.
All right. Mr. Parks, do you have a date?
Yes, ma'am, the 9th of August, if that would work for you.
All right, thank you very much. Is there any objection? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Iverson, do you have anything that you want to say?
I just want to make clear what I know tonight, because I feel like I've answered this question, in that the staff's determination is that the training facility is an accessory use to the overall habilitative care facility, and it is less area than the proposed residential use that is being proposed. So I think a habilitative care facility, which is allowed as a conditional use, would obviously include some space that the, that the program would train people in.
All right, thank you very much. I'm sure we will continue this discussion on July 9th. We're going to take a-
Clarification is August 6th, not, no, not the right day.
It's July, it's the first meeting in July. What's that?
It would either have to be July 2nd, July 9th, or August 6th.
July 2nd. July 2nd.
July 2nd.
Yeah, yeah. All right, all right. This matter will be taken up again at, on the July 2nd meeting. We are going to take a five-minute quick break, and then we're going to come back and hear the case number. On the regular agenda, it's taken us a while to get to the regular agenda for a public hearings, 2012-078, the petitioner being the Anchorage School District amending a site plan for public facilities. Thank you very much. If you'd all please take your seats. This is the public hearing for case 2012-078. The petitioner is the Anchorage School District, and their request is amending a site plan for public facilities. May we hear from staff, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Anchorage School District requests review of an amended public facility site plan of South Anchorage High School for baseball field amenities. The background information for the case is on pages one and two of the staff report. I'll briefly summarize that background. A public hearing for an amended site plan of the football and baseball facility improvements was heard and approved by the Urban Design Commission on, in May of last year. Those background materials are included in your packet. On January 27th of this year, the Turnigan View Estates Homeowners Association filed a notice of appeal to the Board of Adjustment. The appeal alleged procedural error in that the Planning and Zoning Commission and not the Urban Design Commission should have been the proper body to consider proposed changes to the high school site plan. Subsequently, the municipal attorney determined that the case should have been heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission and not the Urban Design Commission. Which brings us to the case before the commission tonight. At this time, I want to point out that there are many people in the audience tonight in that they should limit their comments to those that pertain to the baseball field amenities and not the football. There will be an opportunity in the future to testify on the football field. The case tonight pertains to an amendment to the site plan concerning baseball amenities. This is an amendment to an approved school site plan. The baseball amenities are five. One is the grandstands with a seating capacity of 186. There will be a scores building on this, on the, it's a two-story, on the upper level will be the scorer's shack. Below that is the concessions. There will be an electronic scoreboard. Fourth item is a future Taylor Young memorial. And the fifth item is the flagpole. Most of the amenities I just described are complete. The facility is at approximately 98% completion. The comprehensive plan policies and goals are furthered by the development of South Anchorage High School baseball field amenities. Those are listed on page three of the staff report. Further, the proposal complies with the Hillside District Plan. That too is included on page three of the staff report. The surrounding land use is residential. Schools and residential districts are commonly located adjacent to one another. The baseball amenity improvements are compatible with the intent of its used district, which is PLI, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Schools are permitted principal uses and structures in the PLI district. Sports facilities are accessory and integral uses and structures typically found in high schools. ASD typically rents school facilities, such as their auditoriums and libraries for community performances and meetings to community groups and other schools. These funds help to offset school operations and maintenance. The baseball facility may be rented to community groups, such as the American Legion Baseball. Regarding the buffer yards, there is an 80-foot vegetative buffer along the north end of the school site bordering Leyton Road. And this is where the baseball field will be located, or is located. Buffer, and the, there was an assembly ordinance from 2002, and it did have special limitations. One of those regarded the buffer yards. And I'll just briefly read that. It said, "Buffer yards shall be undisturbed vegetative buffers along the boundary of track B1 or the existing utility easement adjoining the boundary. In the event that the existing vegetation in this designated buffer area is disturbed or removed, the affected area shall be replanted to provide, within a reasonable time for growth, approximately 75% visual absorption of structures under winter conditions from the perspective of persons off of the property on neighboring lands and streets. No trees have been disturbed in the vegetative buffers, and the buffers are in compliance with this special limitation." Around the baseball field, there is an existing dense vegetative buffer between the field and the adjacent residences. There is a scoreboard, and the illuminated face of the scoreboard is oriented to face away from nearby residences. The numbers that indicate the score, number of outs, balls, and strikes, et cetera, are the only thing that's illuminated, and they are in amber color. No significant agency comments were received. However, there were numerous public comments received, and those, and those are contained in your packet. Staff had two comments, or I should say conditions, recommendations. The first one is, as you see it on page six. The only significant one, one was the second recommendation, which reads, "The petitioner will monitor area after baseball events and remove any garbage."
Does that conclude your remarks?
Yes, it does, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Dean.
Through the chair. My question is, on page 17 of the staff packet, is comments to Planning and Zoning Commission from Matthew Hendrick, Plan Review Engineer. He says that private development section has no objection to the approval. However, the petitioner is alerted to the pending requirement to provide a full drainage analysis and calculations to private development under the land use and/or building permit process. So my question is, first, is there a building permit that has been pulled for the work that's been done? And then my second question is, wasn't all this already done? You know, the drainage calculations and analysis, wasn't that all done when the building and the school was originally built? Isn't that just a repetition of what they've already got? Thank you.
Through the chair, Ms. Dean. Yes, all, they originally got all their building permits when they constructed, when they constructed the school. And this comment from Mr. Hendrick is a standard one. He provides with every review that he does. But what he's talking about, if there are any additional structures, such as the, for instance, the scores building, that may change, you know, the drainage just slightly because of the roof space. But to answer the second part of your question, yes, they did, they did seek permits, and permits were issued. They got a permit to install the baseball bleachers and the concession stand in June of last year. They got a, the scoreboard approved in July of last year.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. The petitioner, which is the Anchorage School District, has 10 minutes. Groups have five minutes, and individuals have three minutes. For those of you that wish to testify, it's getting pretty late this evening, and we appreciate your patience, but if those of you are planning to testify, if you could move forward so that we can hear your testimony in an expeditious manner, that would be greatly appreciated. Would the petitioner's representative please come forward?
My name is Edie Knapp, E-D-I-E-K-N-A-P-P. I'm a project manager in the Facilities Department of the Anchorage School District. With me today, I have Kirsten Johnson, who is the principal of South High School, and Scott Worthington is in the audience, who is the designer of the baseball amenities, if there's any questions for him. We believe that this is a straightforward site plan amendment request. South High School has been in service for eight years, and over the past few years, there's been increased public support within the school and the administration for modifications to how the site, the site is being used. I believe the staff did an excellent job of describing the project, and we will hold the rest of our time for rebuttal. We'll answer any questions you have.
All right. Do any of the commissioners have any questions? All right. Thank you very much. You have nine minutes and 40 seconds. All right. The public hearing is open. Would the first person please come forward? Would you say your name for the record? John? Thank you.
My name's John Weddleton, and I'm here today speaking as the president of the Hillside's Home and Land Owners Organization. Halo's been in existence since 1969 with a main goal to preserve large lot rural living on the hillside. At our, I hand it out to each of you a couple-page letter. I'll just go through that briefly. At our June 7th meeting, this site plan was discussed, and the facility, as you heard, was largely completed. So we were looking for an, some agreement on how to mitigate the impacts on the adjacent neighborhood while allowing the expanded baseball program to succeed. Alex Slivkov, the head of the Turner View Homeowners Association, spoke on their position regarding the changes to the baseball field. South High Principal Kirsten Johnson and Mr. Marion Woods spoke on the history and the benefits to the school and the plans for the baseball fields. Several people who live adjacent to the school were there, as were people who have worked actively to promote the development of this baseball field, and everyone was given opportunity to speak. And the general mood seemed to be that those most closely involved showed, the strong supporters of the program wanted unfettered use of the field so they can, you know, maximize their program. While the adjacent homeowners seemed pretty happy with the field as it has been, which is generally, you know, a simple practice field. So the discussion culminated in a request to you that the site plan be approved as presented in the staff report, and the increased use proposed be allowed, but with the following requirements and special limitations to mitigate the impact on the adjacent neighborhood. And those are that the games be limited to between 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., that there be a maximum of 20 games per season, no more than two games per day, that the landscape buffering be upgraded to meet the code requiring 75% visual absorption of structures under winter conditions along the north and west boundaries of the high school, that there will be no special lighting of the baseball field, that there will be installed parking signs on the adjacent residential streets saying residential parking only, that the school provide locked gates at the road entrances to the school property to prevent car access during the school's closed hours, and that they include the, a representative from the Turnigan View Homeowners Association on the group that schedules the games. Thank you.
Are there any questions? I have one question. Games be limited to be doing 10:00 a.m.? Is it 9:00 p.m. or 6:00 p.m.?
I'm sorry, 9:00 p.m.
9:00 p.m.?
It is 9:00.
All right, thank you. And I am a little curious about, I understand there was an attempt for mediation and it wasn't successful between the school district and the Turnigan View Homeowners Association. It seems like I may have read something, or that there was some sort of attempt. Is this, uh, was there any agreement between the school district and the Turnigan View Homeowners Association regarding these, these recommendations?
No, this came out of the discussion at the Halo meeting. So this is basically after the...
After everyone...
People spoke, and the board discussed it, that these seem like kind of a reasonable compromise to accommodate the neighbors and allow the baseball program to succeed.
All right, okay.
You'll hear more about this, I'm sure.
All right, yes, thank you. All right. May the next person please come forward.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Walker, and I'm the student body vice president at South Anchorage High School. I'm here because I'm very passionate about my peers at South and the community that surrounds us. That's why I believe that it is so important for us to continue building our athletic fields. The athletic fields wouldn't be an accessory to our school, but a staple in our community. The feeling of an actual home game would produce a newfound sense of pride, not just for South students, but for the community as a whole. Also, the fields are also important to the students of South because they're in memory of Taylor Young. He was a student and a baseball player at South who passed, and these fields were inspired by and to honor him. Honoring him is very important to the students, faculty, and the community. All in all, these athletic fields will help connect students to its community, bring a sense of camaraderie and pride to South students, and most importantly, honor Taylor Young. Thank you.
All right. Are there any questions? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you for your testimony. Will the next person please come forward?
My name's Alan Barnes, and I live on East Wind Drive in Turnigan View Estates. What's really before you is not the boosters, and the boosters are really behind all of this, and they're the ones who built the 98%. I support South Anchorage High. My daughter graduated from there. I support naming the field. But this is not about giving anything to the school or to the community. It's about taking. The field, I supported it when we wanted to put a nice grass in, a backstop, some stands for the parents. We're all in favor of that. Now there's a large fence, locks, and the, I think it's called, the alliance will be in charge of scheduling the field, basically for the Legion. We didn't plan on that. The school is being disingenuous when they say it was a, they were going to be developing this. It was always a practice field. I was there, I listened to them. They said it was always going to be a practice field. Lights, sound systems, scoreboards, I don't support that. We support naming it after this poor student, for goodness sakes. But to close it, to take it, to take it from my children, from my grandchildren, from all of the kids in the neighborhood? Not a single kid like Taylor Young is ever going to be able to play on that field again unless they become a member of the team, a member of the privileged, a member of the elite. My kids, and all the little kids that played soccer on the baseball field, uh-uh. Closed. Sorry. Can't get on it. You'll ruin it. They have taken public property in the name of this poor child. I, that's, that just shouldn't be allowed to happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would the next person please come forward?
Fred Surra, I live on East Wind Drive. I'd first like to say, it says, "Amending a site plan for public facilities." I agree with what Alan said there. It's not a public facility. I'm told my children aren't going to be allowed to play on that field, at least for a minimum of two years. Little kids with, wear tennis shoes are going to tear the turf up. But kids that weigh 100 pounds more with cleats, I guess they're not going to damage it. That's public property owned by the taxpayers. I pay approximately $8,000 a year for taxes. Half of it goes to the school district. My children have a right to play on that field. I downloaded this article off the Daily News that, "South Anchorage Neighbors Complain About VFW Club Noise." It also goes on to say that a spokeswoman for the city health department sent someone out to evaluate the noise levels. I don't think it's an unreasonable request to have a sound evaluation before they put a stadium in. These pictures show that it looks like it's out in a remote area, but in fact, it's within 100 feet, 100 yards of people's properties. My property is within 100 yards of that baseball field. It's going to be impacted. I'm curious if the municipality has funds to soundproof all the homes if it starts to violate the sound levels, similar to what they did out in the Sky Hills Estates on the air noise. Nobody's against... Nobody's against the field, it's just the actions. Someone needs to take the power away from the people who are trying to lock the kids in the neighborhood out and make it what it is, a public facility. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Will the next person please come forward?
My name is Brent Williams, and I'm a resident of the Turnigan View neighborhood. And I want to direct my comments towards the staff notes given to you regarding the buffer, the vegetation buffer. And I get a little bit irritated about this because I was at the UDC hearing last year, and that was of great concern to the members of the commission at that time, and they told the school district, and this is the school district property, by the way. Okay? This isn't about, to me, about South High. It was, you know, they might have a different person on their side, but this is a school district. It's their property. They're going to do what they want with it, which is already seen by their, you know, their partnership with the American Legion and whatnot, baseball teams. But the buffer, in the notes given to you on page five, states that "no trees have been disturbed in the vegetative buffers, and the buffers are in compliance with the special limitations." Walk the field. Have these people not walked the fields? I've given some pictures to you, and I know there's not a lot of time, so you can't look at them all, but this is last May, 2011. Okay, this is the west side, some neighbors taken from the field, adjacent to the baseball This is from, this is a neighbor's backyard view of the fields last May, taken, again, this is from the east side, southeast side, some neighbors. There's more. But anyway, there have been, since last year, they did plant again some token spruce trees. You know, eventually they'll grow in their place, but they're not. I mean, this is a costly venture that they're doing. If they're to comply with this ordinance, which was established eight years ago, actually 2002, which they haven't, until there were some calls to the municipalities to code enforcement, no trees were planted. And, you know, we're not trying to harass the school district. We just expect them to fulfill what they are supposed to do by ordinance. And so anyway, we expect, you know, each neighbor, each house, each adjacent neighbor expects to have that 75 percent visual absorption of structures under winter conditions, and they're not making the effort to do that. You know, we feel like we're just having, you know, they're just kind of flipping us off, basically. That's the Anchorage School District I'm talking to. And so these are misleading notes given to you. I respectfully, very strongly disagree with what has been said here, stating that the existing dense vegetative buffer, you know, exists. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. I don't see any questions in the queue, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Will the next person please come forward?
My name's Elizabeth Parks, and I appreciate your allowing me to testify tonight. I live in the neighborhood that borders South Anchorage High School, and I belong to the Turnigan View Homeowners Association. I have been a supporter of sports, having three daughters, and I was a softball coach for many years when they were going through elementary school. For the record, I support student activities and facilities that are designed for neighborhood use. However, there has to be a balance that allows for reasonable activity that does not have a significant negative impact on the neighborhood. The planning department's own maps and plans show our neighborhood as being low density in nature and indicating it is projected to stay that way with no significant change within a half a mile. It is more than disappointing that the Anchorage School District has consistently refused to take any responsibility for how adverse the impact is that certain noise has on the immediate neighborhood. I am speaking specifically to the sharp percussive noise caused by a ball hitting a bat. That noise exceeds 60 decibels threshold prescribed in a municipal noise ordinance. This noise can wake a sleeping child or a working adult. The stadium project may have been more acceptable if the Anchorage School District had been a good neighbor and even involved the residents in the planning. Sadly, this is not the case. The most disappointing behavior has been their unwillingness, been their willingness to violate the understanding reached in 2000 with the planning department, that these athletic fields would be practice in nature. Their understanding was committed in writing, but the planning department, now by their silence, refuses to acknowledge this. Throughout the past year, the Anchorage School District has consistently refused to acknowledge that any adverse impact exists. In addition, their silent partners in this application have consistently ridiculed our rights, dismissing them with a statement, "Get used to it or move." All we ever asked for is the protection given to us under the comprehensive plan, the Hillside District Plan, and Title 21, and that should be acknowledged and respected. Since the South Anchorage High School was completed in 2004, the Anchorage School District has ignored your directions in the original site plan amendment that visual buffers be maintained. Their inadequate engineering of the site caused widespread flooding in the spring of 2005, including a lot of neighbors' basements, when they further removed portions of the visual buffer, replacing full-grown trees with three-foot pines. Repeated requests over the past seven years to maintain the buffer were ignored. They have consistently violated the noise ordinance with external paging system that could be heard indoors more than 500 feet, heard indoors more than 500 feet from the property line. Written letters to the superintendent in 2008 through 2011 were ignored. Contrary to the planning department report, this issue was resolved only when Principal Kirsten Johnson said, "If you don't like it, file a complaint." A complaint was filed, and they were silenced the next day.
Thank you very much for your testimony. I don't see any questions, so thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anyone else who wishes to testify? Would you please come forward?
I'm Alex Slivka, testifying on behalf of the Turnigan View Estates Homeowners Association. How do you turn this on? I want to thank you for allowing me to testify tonight in regard to the proposed baseball stadium. President of the Turnigan View Estates Homeowners Association, representing the 165 homes in the area immediately surrounding South High, speaking on behalf of the Homeowners Association, and my views represent the vast majority of residents. I want to start by stating again, we are in complete support of our students' athletic activities and the facilities that were designed to allow neighborhood use. We believe there has to be a balance that allows for reasonable activity that does not have a significant negative impact on our neighborhood, a neighborhood that the planning department's own maps and plans indicate is low density in nature and projected to stay that way. We are disappointed that the planning department's report contains factual errors and omissions in regard to this site and its history. For the past 15 months, we have been subjected to a flawed process which denied our members as neighbors of this project the protections we are entitled to under Title 21. The Hillside District Plan, the original application, was accepted, considered, and granted by the Urban Design Commission, even though we specifically pointed out that they did not have jurisdiction and despite numerous other flaws in the process. We were required to appeal the decision in order to have this correction made. Neither the school district nor the planning department have acknowledged the explicit promise made to the neighbors by the school district when this school was constructed that the athletic fields would be used for practice purpose only. ASD continues to promise it will live up to the explicit buffering requirements of the special limitations on its property and continues to fail to do so. As you can see by this picture taken this spring, that the facilities are clearly visible, and in no way could this be characterized as meeting the 75 percent visual obscurance that you asked them to follow. At-risk permits were issued for construction of this field months before the Urban Design Commission approval of the project was signed, even though those permits were finally revoked after the UDC approval was overturned, and despite the filing of code violation reports, construction work still continues even today. This has been a flawed process in which the trust and goodwill of the neighborhood has been repeatedly violated. All we have ever asked is that the protection given to us under the comprehensive plan be acknowledged and respected. Specific to the application, we do agree with all parties that reasonable use of the current baseball field is permitted. We do disagree on some important points, as you've heard. The visual buffering along the perimeter as mandated under 2000-1088 does not meet the stated requirements. The applicant cherry picks the very solid buffering to the north and south, ignores the inadequate buffering along the west, southwest, and south. Code complaints regarding the buffer have been dismissed with no investigation conducted. Reasonable use could be defined as two to four games per week. The applicant asks for full use, which could be four games per day. This intensity does not fit the low density and the close proximity of the surrounding homes. The applicant neglects to mention that there are currently eight fields that the 11 American Legion teams play on, including one less than four miles from South High. There simply is no need for this field. We believe that the planning department's statement that this application furthers the goals of the comprehensive plan to be incorrect. The quoted policies 44, 45, 78, 86, and 89 are not goals. Taken together, they indicate that public facilities should be designed for long-term, year-round use by the surrounding neighborhood. That exists today, but will not exist if this application is approved. The ASD has publicly stated that use of this field will be restricted, and in fact, it has been locked for the past year. The planning department neglects to mention that this application violates Policies 1, 5, and 7, which direct the planning department to use district plans to guide their decisions to avoid incompatible uses, and that uses shall be compatible in scale with adjacent uses. In their statement, the planning department does not acknowledge the negative impact full use would have on a quiet, low-density neighborhood, nor do they offer any strategy to mitigate this impact as they are required to do under Title 21. And again, finally, even though the municipality and the school district agreed in writing to stop working pending this hearing, they continue to work on the site. Written complaints filed with the planning department in regard to this work without permit have been dismissed without investigation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Commissioner Phelps.
Did you have any particular compromise recommendations here?
I think you've heard the compromise recommendations. I can specifically speak to the question earlier. I did reach out to Mr. Abbott on Friday to specifically go over the issues of limiting the use, which we feel is reasonable, and he refused to discuss any limit of use. So I think the replica, sorry, the recommendations that you heard from HALO, limiting the use from 9:00 a.m., sorry, 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and we would further ask that on any given weekend, there be a weekend free, so a game on Saturday or a game on Sunday, but not a game on both days.
Are there any other questions? Well, I have a couple of other questions. How many games per season are normally played or would be played?
It appears from the schedule, we had a meeting in preparation for this with Carol Cuomo, Mike Abbott, Jim Browder, and a couple of our homeowners, and at the time, he quoted 20 games in a season, which would, over a six-week season, work out to about four or five games a week. So that was Mike Abbott's statement that that would be the use. And again, we're trying to be reasonable. Use four to five games a week, that's fine, as long as they are within that timeframe that we recommended, because remember, there are homes very close in proximity, so we feel that 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. in no way impacts their ability to have those games.
Is that normally the time that games are scheduled, within that time period?
It appears, looking at the American Legion website, that that is in fact the normal time. It seems like the latest games start at 6:30.
Okay. And what about no lighting for the field?
Okay, so at this proposal, there is no field lighting proposed, and we, that was part of, one of the reasons why we were forced to spend $30,000 to appeal all of the Urban Design Commission hearings, because the staff erroneously included field lighting on the baseball application, was notified of the error, refused to pull the error out of the final order. But we think that lighting is a clear violation of the Hillside District Plan, which specifically talks about quiet neighborhoods and dark night skies.
Has lighting been installed?
No lighting has been installed.
Um, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Marion Davis, M-A-R-I-O-N Davis, and I am the grandfather of Taylor Young. And I'm speaking to you this evening in support of the baseball field located at South High in his memory. Taylor was lost in tragic parking lot accident in May, three years almost, as we stand here. He was an avid baseball player and loved the game. To that extent, we became aware of adequate, and I stress, adequate ground adjacent to South High that could support a baseball field. Family, coaches, and many friends approached the Anchorage School District Board, who passed a resolution both naming the field in memory of Taylor as well as use of the field. In going through applications for the building permit, we referred to the Urban Design Commission, who approved the project. This decision was then appealed by some homeowners in the area, however, the original decision held in favor of the baseball field. We started the project late summer of 2009, and now some three years have passed, and the facility is 98 percent complete. And as you see these photos in front of me here, you can see, you can certainly see that. Then a disagreement over whether the original application should have been with the UDC or planning and zoning arose that has halted the project. None of this arose at the time of the UDC meetings. The location of the baseball field is behind the school with the outfield in an easterly direction, plenty of room to fit in the field, with home plate being closest to the school with the outfield going easterly. And that's also where the most deepest buffer's on. When you heard some of these other folks talk about, it was thinner in some areas, that was on the southwest end of the field, which is totally on the opposite end of the property to where the baseball field is. East of the outfield fence is ample footage to a surrounding path. There's also a bike path between the outfield and those woods, continuing east and deep. None of the natural wooded surroundings were disturbed during construction of the baseball field. In fact, some trees have been added. There's plenty of buffer surrounding the field. We hear the term stadium tossed around quite a bit lately. Mr. Webster defines a stadium as "a large oval round or U-shaped, usually open structure as for football, baseball, track events, and song, with tiers of seats for thousands of spectators." Taylor Field will seat 186 folks. Certainly not a stadium as defined. Today, there's adequate parking for some 1,600 students that attend South High. You heard a lot of conversation about adjacent streets being posted, "No parking and song." And I guess if those neighbors want to do that, that's fine with us, but today, there's some 600 parking spots right there. No one going to a baseball game, 186 people are going to park in the neighborhood when they can park right there by home plate and walk down to the field. There are no lights requested. We never requested any lights to start with. School hours are from 0600 to 2300 hours each day. Anyway, in summation, the real justice of all this at the end of the day is they don't want a football stadium. And so the angle here, truth be known, is you stop baseball, and there won't be a football stadium, which is ridiculous. So this fits in there. It should be just fine.
We do have a question
Sure.
From the commission, from Commissioner Pruse, and I would like to state that we are only discussing the baseball fields.
That's correct.
We're not discussing anything relating to the football fields. Commissioner Pruse.
I do think -- I do think, Madam Chair, it was important, part of the motive, though, is what I mentioned. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Well, first, I want to make sure, are you done with your testimony?
I'm sorry?
Are you done with anything before I ask a question? Do you have anything else before I ask a question?
No, no, I'm good.
Could you tell me from the distance from the outfield to the, to the property line, we'll call it the center field to the property line, to the neighborhood, how far that is?
From the outfield fence, say, mid-center to right field, it's probably, I hadn't measured it, Mr. Pruse, but it's probably a couple hundred feet deep there.
Okay. And has the softball field next door been built?
Yes, the softball, the softball soccer field, although some other activities are on another adjacent field, which is down another level, which would be north of that area.
And to the comment prior to your testimony about, does the public use this area, in behind the school here? Looks like there's an intermural place.
Yeah, behind the school, there's the field that we just talked about. There's also another field west of there, behind the school, that's used for soccer. There's a long jump in there. It looks like they may have added shot put in there. And then, of course, all the way down in that southwest corner is Astroturf Field for soccer, football, and games.
Thank you.
Commissioner Robinson?
Sir, can you comment on the proposal to restrict the use to a period of time between ten and nine PM, as well as four to five days a week, and one day per weekend?
Would you like to comment about that? Most games would probably not start before, say, nine o'clock. If you started one at six-thirty, it could go to nine-thirty if it was in extra innings. And then when you have a field like this, I don't see the need to put those type restrictions on it, to be honest with you. I don't think that would be appropriate. I mean, you could go to that field, that area, any day of the week, as say, this afternoon, there's going to be up to a hundred and fifty people out there playing and having fun anyway, so. Did that answer your question, sir?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pruse?
Would you clarify, when you say there's going to be other people playing at facilities, they will be there, are they there past nine o'clock at night? Or are they, are they stopped two at nine o'clock at night?
The rest of the facility is open till eleven o'clock every night.
Okay, so the other facility, the facilities right now are open?
Currently today, the school hours are oh-six-hundred to twenty-three-hundred, seven days a week.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. May we have the next person? Please come forward.
My name is Christine Monette, M-O-N-E-T-T-E, and I am the current Vice Chair and previous Chair of the Huffman O'Malley Community Council. I did give a handout, and I will just briefly kind of hit the highlights.
Are you speaking on behalf?
On behalf of the council.
All right. Thank you very much. You have five minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity tonight. As you know, the Huffman O'Malley Community Council has been involved with this proposal since it was first announced to the community in March of last year. We were at that time very surprised to discover that full plans were in place, state funding had been applied for, any notification was made to the public, and by Mr. Davis's own admission, this started in 2009, and here we were in 2011 in first hearing about this. The public was not notified, nor were the neighbors notified, nor were the councils notified, neither was the school board notified. The council was the one that broke the news to the school board. We have gone through quite a bit of public testimony within the council. We have, at one point, offered, the community council, after deliberation, offered a conditional support for the proposed baseball field. We also proposed making an MOU, creating an MOU between the booster clubs, the school district, AWU, and the municipality, and the neighbors. We drew this MOU up and submitted it to Mr. Abbott at the school board, or school district, for approval and for continuation, and at that point, it disappeared, and we have not had any response from them on this MOU since then. At that point, we decided that we could not in good conscience support the field, because it seemed that everything was being driven towards the high use of these fields for a revenue stream for the school district opposing the neighborhoods. We asked that if you do grant their conditional use permit this evening, that you do so with these conditions, that there will never be any artificial lighting placed on the fields, that these facilities will not be used for rental for revenue for the school district. The baseball boosters had originally assured the community that the fields would be used by South High during the April to June baseball season, and since then, other plans have apparently been made. Organized use of South Fields must be by South teams only, no facility rentals, because there are plenty of baseball fields currently available for rental for the school district. Game times must be limited to allow the peaceful enjoyment of the adjoining residential properties, and each game must include time for warm-up, so no game should begin before ten AM, and as it takes time to wrap up, no game should go past nine. A current traffic study needs to be completed. When the original traffic study was done on this site, these were practice fields only, and games create traffic that practice fields do not. These are surrounded by neighborhoods, and the traffic impact will be greatly felt by them. The originally promised buffer must be created and in place before any seating is installed. Inviting the crowd's sounds and noise is totally inappropriate, and there will, needs to be a real buffer in place to protect the neighborhoods. Only a physical earthen berm planted with native vegetation will offer that real protection, and it must be installed before hosting any games. As this is a publicly owned property, the associated cost will be borne by the entire municipality, so it is totally improper to deny any legal use to the surrounding community and neighborhoods. They must be allowed without locked gates. And one of the other major problems that the neighborhoods have with these school grounds is the illegal after-hours usage. HOCC has requested that two-vehicle entrances be gated and locked during the posted close hours, and that this would be similar to the gates that are currently installed at Goldenview. While nothing can deter the illegal walk-in usage, gates can solve much of the current problems that the neighborhoods are feeling with this facility, and that includes the late-night car races and brody blowing in the parking lots, and also that this be made as a condition of their use. Thank you.
Are there any questions? How large is your community council, and what was your attendance like when you had these discussions?
When the first presentation was made by the booster clubs, the attendance was maybe a dozen, fifteen people. One of the questions that I asked at that meeting was if the booster clubs, the school district, had reached out to the communities surrounding the school, and what their feelings were on this proposed use. And the response that I got was that they had reached out, they had had public hearings, and that everybody was on board, that everybody thought this was great for the kids. My phone at home started ringing at five AM the next morning with very irate neighbors. They had not had any input on this, and they had started to find out about it by flyers that the South Anchorage High had gone around sticking in their door the day before the council meeting. So at that point, the community council reached out to all of the surrounding neighborhoods, and we held a special meeting in March of last year that we had well in excess of one hundred, one hundred and fifty people in attendance of, and most of them were very unhappy about what was happening. And, you know, the baseball stadium is, or baseball field is small, but it is also creating a larger heartburn by the proposals that will be coming down the pike on this property, and that is part of the problem.
All right. Thank you very much. There are no other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Will the next person please come forward?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I appreciate you spending your evening with us today. My name's Kathy Gallagher, last name's G-A-L-L-A-G-H-E-R, and I'm wearing several hats this evening, as I'm sure most of us here do. The first hat I'm going to start with is I am a baseball mom. I've been one for ten years. My son is a former baseball player with South High School. He played four years for them. He was on the team when Taylor passed away. I'm also a member of the Booster Club and Vice President of the Baseball Booster Club as well. Our ballplayers have worked very hard to develop this field. They've been hauling gravel, shoveling dirt, moving rocks, those types of things, and they've made a first-class field up there. They've also done the fundraising for it, and with the baseball field, the fund, it will be funded by the Booster Club and American Legion, and it's not coming from school district Our community needs have changed. I know that one of the things they're saying is these were proposed fields at the beginning. The hillside's growing rapidly. I know Turnigan View, when I moved in there in the late nineties, we have had many, many new homes in there, and so I think the site up at South High School is, the community is in need of that right now. They've also taken away the fields at Kozinski. They're taking two of those, making them into parking lots, so we do have a need for a baseball field. The second hat I wear is I'm a teacher for the Anchorage School District. I teach kindergarten in the morning, health in the afternoons, and I teach respect and responsibility. I teach the kids teamwork. I help build self-confidence and teach them to make healthy choices. Sports promote these same ideals. We all know that busy kids are productive kids that are going to stay out of trouble. The last hat that I wear is I am a member of Turnigan View Estates Homeowners Association. My home is on East Wind Drive. It's backed right up to the football field at this time. I knew there was a school going in there when I bought my home there. I was kind of excited about there, because I had toddlers at the time, and with that comes inherent noises, et cetera. I've enjoyed watching the kids play soccer up there, running on the track, skiing on the trails, playing with the dogs in the field. On any given night out there, there are a couple dozen kids, past nine o'clock, mind you, utilizing the area. I was up there last night. They were playing frisbee soccer. There was a group playing football. The track was in use. There were dogs being walked and playing fetch with. We want this to be a community area. We don't want the dissension among neighbors that we have in our neighborhood at this particular moment. There have been some misconceptions. I had somebody ask me, say that they were told there would be monster truck races, concerts, rodeos in this area up there. That's not going to happen, that won't be allowed. In summation, I would like to see our neighbors, ASD, the muni, work together to come up with solutions to the issues that we have, and make this a community area that we can all be proud of. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your testimony. I don't have any questions in the queue, so would the next person please come forward?
Good evening. My name is Lori Schanke, L-O-R-I-S-C-H-A-N-C-H-E. I'm just representing myself this evening. My kids both went to South High, but both are graduated, so I'm here mostly in support of baseball boosters and the baseball players. I've also worked for years for parks, and there are a couple things I just wanted to bring up. I've spent a lot of time building facilities, as has my staff, and one of the issues people keep bringing up, that the gates are locked and they can't get in, and that's to protect the investment. Baseball fields and any sports fields are very, very expensive to build, and what usually happens is, people seem to think that they're really good dog parks, and they go ahead, open the gate, let their dog in, or somehow or other, a gate gets left open, a bigger gate, and trucks drive through. So I just wanted to mention that, that that is the reason, it's my understanding, that's why the gates are locked. Ms. Monette from the Huffman O'Malley Community Council also seems to remember things a little differently than I remember them last year. I put together the first application and called her in January of last year, and Mr. Worthington and I both attended the community council meeting, and this was after we went around and put flyers up to notify residents to please come to the community council meeting. We never claimed that we had had public hearings and all kinds of meetings, so I just wanted to mention that. The other thing, everyone else is worried about the buffer, and Ms. Ferguson clearly read the special limitations, which clearly stated that if there were, if there was disturbance, that's when things needed to be replanted to be seventy-five percent. I'm only aware of one disturbance, and there was replanting. Finally, I take exception to the term reasonable use that the Turnigan View Estates Homeowners Association is calling for, as well as HALO's asking for reasonable compromise. This is not their property to control. This is the school district's property. The site selection process for this school was done many, many years before these homes were even there, and so I really, truly believe that the school should be allowed to operate as it needs to for our children. I went through the Hillside District Plan, because I was just curious to see if there were any special limitations on use, and the only one that I could find was on page two, two-twenty, two-dash-twenty, that special limitations can be placed on B1A to limit hours of operation, but this is PLI, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Thank you. Please, that's quite all right. Just go ahead, state your name for the record.
My name is Don Winchester, and I'm with the Alliance for American Legion Baseball for support of. We have had a twenty-year partnership with the school district. The fields that we use, we do help maintain or maintain, not only with the school district, but with the municipality. We do the scheduling. We follow the municipal codes and ordinances when we do the scheduling. I believe that this year for the South Field, there's twenty, twenty-four games scheduled on that field. To have restrictions, it's, it is tough. I mean, this is Alaska, it does rain, this is a grass field, you know, we're very conscious of that. That field can only take so many games up here, so there could be some rescheduling, there could be some canceling, but we will always observe the municipal ordinances. I think that the, as far as the lighting, that's, I think that was been discussed with, that the UDC made a mistake. We don't have plans. If we ever did have plans, then we would come back through and come before the planning and zoning, but we have, you know, we have no plans at this time. As far as other uses of the field, that is the Anchorage School District, so as I mentioned, we work with them, we submit a schedule to them. If they choose to lock the field or whatever, that is up to them. We don't, you know, the alliance doesn't dictate that, so I think, Steve Nerland, do you want to come up and speak? Steve is also with the alliance, and I guess we're representing the alliance here too, so.
All right. You have three minutes remaining for your testimony.
I won't take that long, Madam Chair. Just regarding baseball fields, very familiar, we do maintain, there actually are nineteen teams that would be playing on this field from all around the state. Restrictions on weekends are very difficult, because we do have teams that travel here from Fairbanks, from Keene Eye, teams from the Valley. South has two different types of team, the varsity and JV team, and to put any kind of restrictions other than what we would normally do in terms of limiting wear and tear, baseball fields can't be played on seven days a week, or you'll ruin the baseball field, so we're very, very familiar with that. We have baseball fields that are used seven days a week, and they show the wear, so we certainly wouldn't be doing that, but the actual, any kind of restrictions on weekends really limits the opportunity to use. really limits the opportunity to use a beautiful field, one of the best grass fields in the state of Alaska. That's all I have to say.
I, we have a question from Ms. Dean.
Through the chair, could you explain, you're saying that only the American Legion kids will be allowed to play on this field? Am I understanding you correctly?
No. The school district and American Legion Baseball has an agreement. We run high school baseball. We do all the coaching as volunteers. There's no school district funds. Community funds are raised by the American Legion to run the high school baseball program, so we've been doing that for 20 years. And so our permit would come from the school district for use of the field. If other groups wanted to use the field, the school district would permit them, just like other groups use school district fields all over the city. They would be permitted through the school district, and there'd be ample opportunity for that. They would, of course, need to meet what other groups would if they were using a school district facility, and they would have to fill out an application and meet those requirements.
Are there any other questions? And so just so that I have it clear in my mind, then that is a revenue generator for the Anchorage School District? Is that how that works, or can you explain what your financial arrangement is?
Our financial arrangement with the school district or the school district's rentals?
Right.
Okay, that's, we're not representing the school district.
No, I understand that.
I'm not sure exactly what their rental fees are. They vary by size of field, size of facility. I know that there's a schedule for that.
All right, thank you. We'll ask them. Thanks, when the time comes. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify? Would you please come forward?
Good evening. My name is David Frenier, F.R.E.N.I.E.R., and I live at 3541 Eastwind Drive. My lot is, abuts the school district property. I think we need to go back to the original site plan approval process that the school district and the Planning and Zoning Commission went through back earlier than 2000. And, you know, we had a residential area surrounding the school site, and my recollection is, is that originally, when this property was acquired by the school district, it was with the notion that this was going to be a middle school site based on the size of the property. And then when Golden View Middle School went through its process and whatnot, there was some swapping of purpose done to accommodate sizes and things like that, and where the district really needed a new middle school versus a new high school. And so during the site approval for this process, it was acknowledged that this site is a little tight for a 1,600-person high school with all of the amenities and supporting athletic facilities and whatnot that would normally go there, and it was constantly represented in the various public meetings and whatnot, and it's well documented, that the position of the school district to the community to help mitigate the issues of a pretty intensive use being plunked down in the middle of a residential area was that the, these fields would be practice fields, and that the competition would be held at other central locations, as was the practice throughout the community at that time. In fact, when you look at the narrative that is with the approval letter that was authored in 2000, it even went so far to say, when it was describing these facilities, there wasn't even going to be a need for fencing, merely backstops, because these were practice fields. So the question is, is, you know, what has changed that causes the more intense use of this site to have to be brought to bear? And, you know, if the answer to that is that the community has grown and that there's a need for these kinds of facilities, I think the community has made some accommodations that, in a way of compromise, that would support, well, would allow its support for these facilities, but in a way that tries to continue that mitigation for the intensive use that comes about by, you know, we heard, you know, four to six games a week, then it was, it was 20 games a week and eight teams, but no, it's 19 teams statewide. There's just a lot of activity going on here in what is really supposed to be a relatively quiet residential area surrounding the school. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. I don't see any questions. All right, would the next person please come forward?
Hi, and I know it's late, and thank you for listening. My name is Tammy Howell, and I'm a resident of Turnigan View. And just as a follow-up for him, June 14th of 1999, the Anchorage School District approved the architectural plans for South Anchorage High School. On the 15th of June of 1999, the school district met at Golden View Middle School with the homeowners associations and the neighbors to present what was going to be happening at South High. One of the real concerns back then was the traffic mitigation, and they did do reviews, and the red marks and barriers that you see along Elmore and around the neighborhood are a result of those meetings all the way back to 1999. I just want to let you know and thank the predecessors to planning and zoning, because I think they got it right in 2000 when they put restrictions on this property. It's only 50 acres. It was acknowledged at that time that it was not going to be available for intensive use on any of the fields, and they were all designated a practice, as practice fields for use, and I just would very much appreciate your not approving any amendments to the site plan and just be reassured by your predecessors that they made the right decision to put restrictions on this property.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Would the next person please come forward?
Hi, my name is Eileen Floyd, and I'm just a member of the community at large. My son does play for South High School baseball, and I just, I always just have to come back to this being a community field, and that schools are the places where we'd like to see our kids engaging in healthy activities, and I urge you to pass this amendment without restriction.
Thank you. The next person, please come forward.
One of the issues that should be noted...
Would you please state your name for the record?
I'm sorry. Roger McConaughey, I live at 3633 Eastwind Drive. My property abuts the east school. We have a good view of the school because there is no buffer behind us. There's some low trees that have been planted, original construction as well as last year. So getting beyond that, addressing the buffer, it will not provide noise mitigation. We all know that. The trees are there. They'll possibly do some visual, but that's about it. The reason that we want the restrictions, and as you look at my list, they're the same ones that the gentleman from Halo pointed out. When we come home on a weekend, we want to have some time off. Mr. Nerland, you want to have a tournament starting on Saturday morning going through till Sunday night? It affects us. I don't, I noticed that Chugak just opened five fields. When you see an aerial photo, there aren't any houses right adjacent to them. They're remote, they're away from somewhere, or people's homes. In our case, because of the proximity to the school, any noise coming off that, whether, I don't care if it's 160 people or if it's 300 people, amplified noise, pings off of baseball bats, et cetera, will get to you. When you start talking 14, 16 hours a day, that's one issue. Then it goes beyond that. Reason we want that nine o'clock shutdown time, give us a little bit of time in the evenings. Last night at 12 o'clock, I called APD. The night before, it was about 1 o'clock, APD. ASD will not release that property. It's supposed to be closed at 11 o'clock. There's no closure. There's either kids spinning their tires, there's people up there. Last night, it was somebody up there with referee whistles blowing at between 11:30 and 12 o'clock at night. We need our sanctity. We were there first, the school came later. I actually voted for the school to go in based upon the promises that were made by ASD. Those have been reneged on, and they continue to be ignored. As far as buffer, the ultimate will be is a fence like there is at 76 and C Street. Somebody's going to end up paying for that, or have to, for noise mitigation. We need to have some quiet time, and that's why the restrictions are required. Mr. Abbott specifically stated 20 games per year. Ms. Johnson said two games per day, or she said three hours per game, so a couple games, two per day would be fine. We have to have a weekend day off. We can't listen to the noise all weekend. You've heard the activity 10 to 9. Local residents, here's another thing on scheduling. You want to do the scheduling, we want to have some input in our backyard. We have to be involved with that scheduling and have some veto power. When it gets to the point where we're sitting here and somebody loads the schedule with four games a day, five games a day, right in our backyard, we have to have some input into that. The other big thing that would really solve this whole thing, and it was brought up by Ms. Manette, the MOU. HOCC, Turnigan View, and others tried to do a memorandum of understanding that would have outlined and specified what the expectations are. If that was done, and in good faith, it would keep everything in writing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could I have a show of hands of other people that wish to testify? We are obligated to end our meeting by midnight. As a matter of fact, I think I need a motion to extend to midnight, so if I could have that from the commission. Moved by Terry Parks and seconded by Ray Hickel. And I don't see any objections, so we're going to continue to midnight, but that is the extent of our ability to continue this hearing, and I would like, I know that all of you are very interested in us making a decision this evening, so we'd like to have some time for deliberation, and so unless you have something else that you would like to contribute, if you could just make your comments, one way or the other, very brief, if you would please come forward at this time, and any voluntary brevity would be greatly appreciated. Otherwise, to be perfectly frank, we're not going to be able to make a decision this evening.
Hi, my name is Donna Purcella, that's spelled P-U-R-C-E-L-L-A. I live on the western side of the Turnigan View Estates subdivision, and I am not a member of the homeowners association because I actually bought my lot when there weren't any homes there, and there was no homeowners association. Before I did buy my lot, I did understand that there was a school site there, and I understood that buying my lot, so I think that those of us that live in the Turnigan View Estates have to take responsibility for that. But I also think that if you have not had the chance to go walk this piece of property, that you need to do so. My husband has taught in the Anchorage School District for 36 years this year, and I have spent hundreds, and I mean hundreds of hours, at every high school in this district because I had four athletes, and my husband has coached for 36 years. And this site is different than any other high school site in this town. This does not have parking lots and buffer zones around it like Diamond and West and East. It's different. It's plopped right in the middle of a very upscale neighborhood. And when these original promises were made by the municipality, it was because the proximity of these properties were so close to the property line of the school district. So my concerns are that we try to mitigate the noise, the field is already in. We need to mitigate that noise with a berm or something, create a buffer. There isn't one there. One needs to be created by the school district. We need to determine whether or not this is going to be a funding issue for the school district and that the use is going to be more than just for the South Anchorage High School to generate revenue for the school district. That's not appropriate. My kids, from the time that they were born, went up there and played on those fields, and now all of a sudden, my grandchildren are not allowed to play on the fields anymore. This is a community piece of property that we are now being locked out of. We don't understand that. We don't understand why, all of a sudden, that we have to sign a permit through the school district to play on our own baseball field. The lighting is obviously a non-issue at this point. I think that you have to, in this, if you choose to pass this use, there needs to be a specific number of games that can be played a week, because if you don't do it, they're going to abuse it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward at this time? Anyone else at all?
Good evening. My name is Lisa West, W-E-S-T. I am the president of the South Football Booster Club, and I'm here to speak about baseball tonight. We are supporting baseball. We support all sports at South. I have had three children attend South High School. My oldest one graduated two years ago. I currently still have two of them there. My kids are lucky to attend South High School. It is a very high-achieving high school. The houses that are around in that whole area, I'm not just talking about those neighborhoods that immediately surround, but the entire South community is, the housing prices go up because those people want to live in an area where their kids will go to South. Having said that, when South was first open, the needs of the community were different than they are now. The needs of the school were different. As the community changes and grows, those needs change, and I'm sure I don't have to tell you all that. You hear cases all the time about different zoning needs, different areas of town that need to have zones changed. The school has changed over time. It is also ASD's property to do with what they want to do. Nobody should be telling them what they should be doing with their property, how many games they should have, what times they can play their games. Most baseball games begin at 9:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. I don't see any questions, so is there anyone else who wishes to testify tonight? I want to caution all of you that we're running out of time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Bill Evans. I am an attorney representing the Taylor Young family and South Anchorage Baseball Boosters. It's very late to be hearing from an attorney, so I'll be extremely brief. I just want to point out the one thing that has been spoken of, it was the Comprehensive Plan, Policy Number 86, talks about public partnerships with the school district. This is an amazing story. We don't get the whole picture here, but you take this tragedy of Taylor Young's death and all these people, Anchorage citizens, getting together, spending their own time, their own money, their own effort to build this facility that is a quality facility, unlike others in town, for the community. And even though it's used for, only for baseball, and it's got a particular use, it doesn't mean it's not a community-used facility. The school district, as was testified, allows other groups to use this facility, but it has to control. It's just not for kids riding their bicycles on it and people walking their dogs on it. It is a quality baseball facility. Not only should this group be approved for this use, they should be applauded for what they have done. Also, it's in compliance with the Comprehensive Plans, in compliance with the Hillside Plan, and unlike the testimony before, it's not out of compliance with the previous site plan. There were no restrictions in the previous site plan. There's been talk about promises and all that kind of things. There is no restriction on these fields being developed in the manner that they are in the previous plan, so I believe the Planning and Zoning Commission should approve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your brevity. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify? Unless you have something specific in addition to what has already been said, I would like to caution you that time is running out if you want a decision this evening.
Hi, my name's Charlotte Mathais. I live on 3520 Eastwind Drive. My property does not, is not on the perimeter of the school, but there have been times where kids will be playing, and we've had golf balls in our front yard and my backyard, so like, they'd have to go over my roof. And so if golf balls can go that far, I was, noise evidently can. I've lived there since 1996, and, you know, on August the 14th, the Anchorage School District Memo Number 22, it was a promise that said that the property was too small, and these were for only practice fields. So my question is, when did they go to something other than practice fields, whether it's called a stadium or whatnot? called a stadium or whatnot? The thing that is alarming is that, because it's for rent, you know, we're doing it for revenue now, and when you do something for revenue, it's usually to make money. So, our neighborhood is a great neighborhood, you know, including whatever differences we all have. We have the best neighbors, it's the best neighborhood, people want to live in our neighborhood, and I think our purpose there as the homeowners association or members of our community is we want to maintain that quality there. And with a stadium in our backyard, it just doesn't do that. And we have been, as homeowners, we've been, had made, been made promises, and they haven't been made. Whether it's the buffer, I do have to think, and there were some volunteers from the baseball team, that on August 27th, the volunteers planted 125 spruce seedlings, 250 alders. Someone, I guess, I don't know if it was Awu that came in and tried to revegetate the buffer in 2011. Well, you know, had they done that when they promised to back in 2002, you know, this would be less of an issue. So, part of the, our concerns as a neighborhood is the safety and litter, you know, who's responsible for picking up the litter? You can't really say that after you have whatever number of many people, that there's no litter to clean up. As a neighborhood and a community, we do take care of our neighborhood. We plow areas that municipalities are supposed to plow, so that our kids from other neighborhoods can walk through our neighborhood to get to school. And there are people from other neighborhoods that come in, and they park at the gates to wait for the kids, because they don't want to drive into all the traffic at school. So, as far as putting up the signs, we don't think that we're over-demanding, but whenever we're made promises, there's just no follow-through. So, as concerned residents, we really have to put our foot down.
Thank you for your testimony. I want to caution all of you to let you know, we have 20 minutes. The petitioner has nine minutes and 45 seconds left for rebuttal. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify? I, again, want to say, there are lawyers on both sides of this case. We are adjourning at midnight, because we are required to do that by statute.
I'll be quick. My name is Jackie Hoover, H-O-O-V-E-R. I live at 13608 Main Cell Drive, which is part of the Turnigan View Estates Homeowners Association. I appreciate ASD recognizing the advantages that field improvements would have for students at South Anchorage, hundreds of ASD students, and numerous young aspiring athletes throughout our state. As a member of TVHA, I purchased my home in 2006. I live just one block away from South High property, and I purchased my home in part because of its proximity to South High School. I was elated to hear of the field improvements at South, because it substantiates and affirms ASD's mission to educate all students for success in life. Without question, ASD is looking to promote wellness, but even more importantly, ASD recognizes that educating a child doesn't happen within only the classroom but beyond. Student athletes learn about how setting goals, working hard to achieve them, and being dedicated are important, in addition to teamwork and stamina, which all once again support ASD's mission. Additionally, ASD has offered an exceptional venue for our community to grow, and to have local neighbors congregate to enjoy these ballgames, in addition to building the stronger community which we all can take part in. Please realize that a number of people who are part of TVHA do wholeheartedly support these field improvements. In regards to the petitions that have been brought forth, leadership within TVHA can only show that 33% of the homeowners disapprove of these field improvements. I urge you to approve this amendment, as it advantages wholeheartedly support the educational experience for children within our neighborhood and community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify? All right, the petitioner has nine minutes and 45 seconds.
We would like to not speak anymore and answer questions, if you have any.
All right, are there any questions? Seeing and hearing none, thank you very much. The public hearing is now closed. What is the wish of the commission? Commissioner Prues.
In the matter of, case number 2012-78, amended public facility site plan for South Anchorage High School baseball field amends. I move to adopt it with the department's recommendations found on page six, items number one and two.
That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Hickel. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, no further comment.
All right, just briefly, Madam Chair, the discussion, the background, and the project description, and further discussion, shows that the goals and policies of the Comprehensive Plan and Hillside Plan are both conforms, that this has been approved by the UDC. Unfortunately, it should have come to the PNZ first for us, and that I see no reason to restrict a baseball field surrounded by softball, football, tennis, hockey, and other intramural sports. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Well, I have a question. Ms. Ferguson, can you tell me, is this the only high school that is immediately adjacent to single-family residences?
Madam Chair, I don't have full knowledge of the other schools, high schools in Anchorage. I know that Diamond High School has residences, residents immediately surrounding it. Probably Edie with the school district, Ms. Knapp, would be the better one to answer that question.
Could the school district answer that question?
Madam Chair, there are a variety of other high schools in the city of Anchorage that do have neighboring homes immediately adjacent to them. East High School being one of them, West High School being another, Diamond High School with extensive facilities on campus being another.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? Commissioner Robinson?
Question first, would lighting be allowed currently, or would the commission consider an amendment to make sure that we clarify that artificial lighting would not be permitted at the field?
We have to vote on the main motion, and then we can deal with an amendment. Is that correct? No? Do the, deal with the amendment first.
So, I move that we amend the motion to clarify that no artificial lighting would be allowed at the field.
Okay. And that's seconded by Commissioner Parks. Is there an objection?
Yep.
All right, there is an objection. Let's use our voting machines, then. All right, that motion is approved. All right, now, are there any other motions? I'm sorry, any other amendments? So, we're back to the main motion. Is there any objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. Thank you. All right, at this particular point in time, Mr. Parks?
I have a motion to adjourn.
All right, I need a second. Seconded by Peter Malkay. We are adjourned.
Yeah.